This time we're going to call to order the meeting of April 15th, 2019. Is there a motion to move to closed session?
Second.
Is there a second? Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, keep talking everybody, it's the area you hear when it's silent.
Certainly. So what we're doing is, is we're combining two of the three staff positions that are part-time. So essentially, we're actually adding, putting two together, actually having one less staff member. The idea being is that we're looking for more career-minded folks. And a full-time position would facilitate us hopefully being open longer hours, because that full-time person could work, could work weekends as well. So that's why we're trying to prepare to do that.
So I kind of put that together in my head, and I'm totally in favor of that. It makes sense. I just want to ensure that we're gonna be able to commit, and we're gonna get some kind of commitment, on when and then what hours can we actually start seeing the animal shelter open more.
Sure. We're right now trying to hire for animal control officer, one more position, and we have to fill this position as well. And then, I'll have an estimate on the hours that we can do. We're trying to, at one point, we're trying to get open seven days a week. So that's kind of the goal.
All right, thank you.
Any questions? The only, the question, have you had a chance to sit down with the ad hoc committee and review some of these ideas with that committee and the public?
Who is the ad hoc committee?
For the shelter.
I don't know who that is.
That would be me and Councilwoman Spencer.
Okay, yeah, no, not yet.
So we're having those discussions, and I believe a member of the public?
Kevin Barcelos?
I just wanted to put our support behind this proposal. Anything we can do to augment staff at the shelter and make the shelter hours more accessible to the public, we're all in favor of. So I'd ask you to approve this request.
Thank you.
Any other speaker cards?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any other questions or comments from council? Okay, is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we pass Resolution 2019. There's seventy-two resolutions, City Council, City of Hollister, combining two of the three budgeted part-time animal control assistant positions into one full-time animal control assistant position for the police department. And I would also additionally request that we make an informal adjustment of an annual additional cost of approximately $6,300 for our budgeting purposes. It's not a budget, formal budget change, just an informal request that we make note of that.
Did we have that documented somewhere with the amount?
Yeah, I mean, what we would normally do in this particular situation is, I'm sure Chief Westrick has enough money in the cover.
It's already covered, yeah.
So what we would do in our, at our next fiscal year, we'll just, we'll have it go in that way. Usually, when we, just for purposes of the city council meetings, when the city staff is asking for appropriations, we usually attach that supplemental appropriation sheet, which is the formal sheet that allows the finance department to make those, make those adjustments in our budget. So, but we'll take care of that in June.
Thank you.
I'd like to request, when we've already got it covered, that we make note of that fact somewhere in the report, so that it becomes, that the council is aware of it upfront.
If you look at the financial impact statement, it's actually on there?
It is. I didn't see it.
We didn't have it in ours.
It said no financial impact.
Yes, and that's essentially, I mean, the budget that the city council provided, the animal control shelter at the beginning of last year, is not being augmented before this changes, the costs are associated. So when we say there's no fiscal impact, technically, there's a fiscal impact to the action that's being taken, but there's no budgetary action required. I apologize for that.
No, there's nothing to apologize for. Maybe we ought to just change the language when that's the case. No financial impact, meaning there's no impact, and saying that it's already in the budget, saying it's already in the budget. Thank you. That does not change my motion.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. We're gonna move to Item A eight.
Is there a specific question on this item?
No. I pulled it just so that we can go over the list for the benefit of the public, so they have some idea of what the projects are to be funded by the SB one State Fund Road Repair and Accountability Act.
Okay, so for the 1920 fiscal year project, we have Rustic Street, south of Maple to north of Santa Ana, McCarthy Street, east of Alvarado Street to west of Chapel Road, Fifth Street, east of Powell Street to west of Monterey Street, Fifth Street, east of College and west of Powell Street, Washington Street, south of South Street and north of Hawkins Avenue.
Thank you very much. I think the public appreciates knowing what's on the agenda, which, which items are coming up as far as road repair is concerned, because we get many, many, many inquiries concerning just that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That answers my question.
Councilmember Resendez?
Yeah, so I had a brief conversation with the city manager about this item. I'm wondering, are any of these streets overlapping with Measure G funds, or streets that have been identified through Measure G funds?
We do, there's a few streets in the Measure G that looks like we actually did some partial streets. I've got a copy. So we had, yeah, we had several streets that were partially done and two that were already on the list.
And then, can we, just for information reports, I'm not on COG, but can I, and probably the rest of the council and the public, get a copy of the streets that have been identified for Measure G? Is that possible?
Yes.
And then, my other question, if you could just briefly, or mostly a comment, if you can briefly explain what the PCI is and how these streets were identified, just briefly, just for the public's knowledge. I'd appreciate it.
Well, the PCI is the Pavement Condition Index. We had a, this PMS, Pavement Maintenance System.
Management.
Management, sorry. Report done. I can't really speak on the...
That's okay. So a couple of years ago, the City of Hollister hired a consultant to go around and do a physical survey of our streets and their conditions. Part of the SB one funding and even Measure G money was, is to make sure that communities that were doing this actually has a pavement condition index through a pavement management strategy or plan system, so that when they're, the idea is, is that their streets are rated basically from about zero to 100, right? Most bad streets are around 10 or 15. The streets that I think we identified here are all probably below a 30, which is one of the requirements that I think that I'd like to present to you folks, at least as an initial whack. So the condition is, the PCI or the index that we use is across the entire City of Hollister. Everybody can know what their actual street is, if they want to know. It's broken up into segments sometimes, but for the most part, you can call our office and we can give you what that index number is. Overall, the City of Hollister at the time had an average of a 69, which is just basically on borderline between fair and good. The semi-problem with that is that we've added a lot of streets over the last couple of years. We've done a major rehabilitation program last year. Those streets aren't actually in the system yet, so they're not showing if we've actually raised the level of PCI in our community. But, so, we're working on that right now to make sure that we're updated as we fix things. As you know, we've spent the last couple of years doing crack filling and gap, and gapping. We've also done, like I said, a couple of big rehabs. The other thing I would say about this particular thing is you'll likely be getting an item in front of you in a couple of months. You have about $650,000 of SB one money. We want to probably try to increase the amount of the project size, and we'll probably use Measure G monies to do that. So you'll, we'll be coming back when we actually go out to bid. There'll be not only a list of the roads that we approved last year, because we're always a year ahead, right? So this list that you're adopting is for 1920. You actually have an 1819 list that we're, that we'll be working on this summer, but it'll be augmented by another set of streets that the council will approve from, say, Measure G monies that's being collected right now. So the goal is always have a, kind of economies of scale. We want to try to do as bigger project as we possibly can.
And I do have the 1819 list with me as well.
Do you want to read the 1819 list as well?
Sure. All right. For 1819, we have Central Avenue, east of Graf Road to west of College, Fifth Street, east of San Benito to west of Sally, Seventh Street, west of Line to west of San Benito. We had on there Lad Lane, but we ended up doing that with 1718. Talbot Drive, west of Sunset to east of Olga, Nora Drive, south of Tina Drive to north of Irma Drive, Olga, south of Talbot to north of Majestic, Paul Drive, west of Lad Lane to east Nora, and Hillok, east of Lad to north of Sunset.
I just thought it was important that the public knows. This seems to be a very heated issue every time it comes up, and people want to know, why are they not fixing my streets? So I thought we can give a brief description, so the public is aware of how these streets are chosen and the projects are done and the timeframe. Another thing, since I have the microphone and we're talking about this, Billy, we talked about, I think one of the worst streets in the whole entire city happens to be in my district, and it's Suter Street, because they don't even have a paved street. It's gravel. So I, that's probably why I'm asking for the Measure G, to see if that street is identified on there. And if not, how can we get it paved or partially paved? I know there's some issues behind that, but.
I'd like to make a comment on that.
If I may respond to Councilman Resendez, yes, Suter Street obviously is not a great street, but it also, it takes a little bit more design and civil engineering work over there, as opposed to just doing a grind and overlay or something like that. So it's a little bit in a different category. We have been kind of working on a project on D and Suter for some time now for sidewalks. And some infrastructure, as I think I mentioned to you earlier, it's super flat over there, so we want to make sure that things are draining appropriately. But we hear you on the section of Suter Street that absolutely is in with the City of Hollister. And I think that there's also, it's worthy of having a discussion with the property owners in the back to potentially carry that street all the way to the end, if they're interested in dedicating that to the city or not. So we'll go down that path, for sure.
Okay, Councilmember Lenora?
Okay, well, Roland, you're right. I'm wondering what the heck's going on. We never get anything on San Benito Street, south of South Street. Come on. Every street gets done around me, and you have the busiest street in the city of Hollister, it's not bypassed, but downtown, and nothing gets done on the streets San Benito, South Street, to Nash Road. Nothing, ever. Our patches are when the water line breaks. I am getting more irritated as this subject comes up. I'm gonna rally the...
The troops?
The neighbors down there. We don't get something.
But I think, I think you just identified, and I know Councilwoman, President Lenora, I know. And I know you know exactly what the issue is with San Benito Street in many cases, is that it, the water, the water, the mains there is a problem. And the last thing we want to do is overlay San Benito Street from South Street to Nash, and then continue to have water breaks without being able to fix the infrastructure.
You're never gonna fix that infrastructure in my lifetime. We just get nothing down there. There's nothing left of that road. How noisy it is.
Councilmember Lenora, if I can interject real quick. No, you're absolutely right. We understand. I think, Bill, I think it's very important, the new council, to have that meeting to bring out the book, the index, so they can understand, and some of the plans that were happening, we had on the board, so everybody understands what's going on, because she's absolutely right, and the public, the public doesn't know the plan for replacing the line and different things, so.
There's no plan for that right now.
Well, there, I mean, there's been a capital improvement project for the replacement of the water line. It just happens to be a hugely expensive line.
Downtown also, because we don't want to get off topic, but there's a huge thing when you're gonna do that in a commercial zone. There's a water issue. You gotta turn the water off. How do you do that? But if you do the residential area, we don't have any businesses down there. All right. I'm gonna, I'm not happy. Well, I gotta see everybody else's street get done, and we don't get anything.
Councilmember Richmond?
I'd like to, I'd like to point out something that's really important. First of all, on these items, especially on the Measure G money that's coming, we are required by the ballot to use the pavement management system to decide what streets get fixed, number one. Number two is, I know, I know most of the public is not, not gonna say you don't understand it, you're just gonna shake your head. The truth of the matter is, if your street is in really, really bad condition, it is not getting fixed. The reason is, the pavement management system applies the fixes where it saves the most money. Now, that makes more sense. I know it doesn't do you any good if your street is in really bad condition. If your street is in such terrible condition that overpay, overpaving it with the management system is just a waste of money, because that'll, if the base is no good, it'll just break up again very shortly, and you'll be exactly where... So, the goal is always have a, kind of economies of scale. We want to try to do as bigger projects as we possibly can.
And I do have the eighteen, nineteen list with me as well.
Do you want to read the eighteen, nineteen list as well?
Sure. All right. For eighteen, nineteen, we have Central Avenue, east of Graf Road to west of College, Fifth Street, east of San Benito to west of Sally, Seventh Street, west of Line to west of San Benito. We had on there Lad Lane, but we ended up doing that with seventeen, eighteen. Talbot Drive, west of Sunset to east of Olga, Nora Drive, south of Tina Drive to north of Irma Drive, Olga, south of Talbot to north of Majestic, Paul Drive, west of Lad Lane to east Nora, and Hilloc, east of Lad to north of Sunset.
I just thought it was important that the public knows. This seems to be a very heated issue every time it comes up, and people want to know, why are they not fixing my streets? So I thought we can give a brief description so the public is aware of how these streets are chosen and the projects are done and the timeframe. Another thing, since I have the microphone and we're talking about this, Billy, we talked about, I think one of the worst streets in the whole entire city happens to be in my district and it's Suter Street, because they don't even have a paved street. It's gravel. So I, that's probably why I'm asking for the Measure G, to see if that street is identified on there. And if not, how can we get it paved or partially paved? I know there's some issues behind that, but.
I'd like to make a comment on that.
If I may respond to Councilman Resendez. Yes, Suter Street, obviously is not a great street, but it also, it takes a little bit more design and civil engineering work over there as opposed to just doing a grind and overlay or something like that. So it's a little bit in a different category. We have been kind of working on a project on D and Suter for some time now for sidewalks and some infrastructure. As I think I mentioned to you earlier, it's super flat over there, so we want to make sure that things are draining appropriately. But we hear you on the section of Suter Street that absolutely is in with the city of Hollister. And I think that there's also, it's worthy of having a discussion with the property owners in the back to potentially carry that street all the way to the end if they're interested in dedicating that to the city or not. So, we'll go down that path, for sure.
Okay, Councilmember Lenore?
Okay, well, Roland, you're right. I'm wondering what the heck's going on. We never get anything on San Benito Street, south of South Street. Come on. Every street gets done around me, and you have the busiest street in the city of Hollister, it's not bypassed, but downtown, and nothing gets done on the streets, San Benito, South Street, to Nash Road. Nothing, ever. Our patches are when the water line breaks. I am getting more irritated as this subject comes up. I'm gonna rally the...
The troops?
The neighbors down there. We don't get something.
But I think, I think you just identified, and I know, Councilperson Lenore, I know. And I know you know exactly what the issue is with San Benito Street in many cases, is that it, the water, the main there is a problem. And the last thing we want to do is overlay San Benito Street from South Street to Nash and then continue to have water breaks without being able to fix the infrastructure.
You're never gonna fix that infrastructure in my lifetime. We just get nothing down there. There's nothing left of that road. How noisy it is.
Councilmember Lenore, if I can interject real quick.
No, you're absolutely right. We understand. I think, Bill, I think it's very important, the new council to have that meeting to bring out the book, the index, so they can understand, and some of the plans that were happening, we had on the board, so everybody understands what's going on. Because she's absolutely right, and the public, the public doesn't know the plan for replacing the line and different things, so.
There's no plan for that right now.
Well, I mean, there's been a capital improvement project for the replacement of the water line. It just happens to be a hugely expensive line.
Downtown also, because, we don't want to get off topic, but there's a huge thing when you're gonna do that in a commercial zone. There's a water issue. You gotta turn the water off. How do you do that? But if you do the residential area, we don't have any businesses down there. All right. I'm gonna, I'm not happy. Well, I gotta see everybody else's street get done, and we don't get anything.
I hear you.
Councilmember Richmond?
I'd like to, I'd like to point out something that's really important. First of all, on these items, especially on the Measure G money that's coming, we are required by the ballot to use the pavement management system to decide what streets get fixed, number one. Number two is, I know, I know most of the public is not, not gonna say you don't understand it, you're just gonna shake your head. The truth of the matter is, if your street is in really, really bad condition, it is not getting fixed. The reason is, the pavement management system applies the fixes where it saves the most money. Now, that makes more sense. I know it doesn't do you any good if your street is in really bad condition. If your street is in such terrible condition that overpay, over paving it with the management system is just a waste of money, because that'll, if the base is no good, it'll just break up again very shortly, and you'll be exactly where it was. So what the pavement management system does is it evaluates the condition of the street and tells you which ones are value to fix. And the ones that are not a value to fix with the pavement management system basically have to be rebuilt from scratch. And part of the rebuilding from scratch, if you're going to do it, is at the same time to get the water system fixed so that you can do it all at once. It's very frustrating, I understand it, but the truth of the matter is, it is the best use of the public funds. And if you have a terrible street, people say, I have a terrible street and it doesn't get fixed. The reason it doesn't get fixed is it's so terrible that the fix was so expensive and will last such a short time that it's just throwing the money away. It's like taking an old house that is, all the framing is gone and all the termites have eaten through it, and say, well, I need new, I need new stuff on the roof. It doesn't work that way. It's, I'm not saying it's too complicated for anybody to understand. All I'm saying is, it's not obvious what the right answer is. And by the way, using the pavement management system to fix the pavement is the most economical and quickest way to do it, and it is mandatory by the law we passed concerning the measure, use of the Measure G money to make sure we just don't throw it away for political reasons. I, it's a difficult subject, and when the mayor has this meeting, I think he ought to get the public in so that they, you guys can actually see what streets are rated and how they're rated and which ones are gonna get fixed, and why. Thank you for your time.
Let me just add on to that, because I think there might be some confusion with the statement. The issue is dollars, folks. And over the last few years, we've put away dollars to do the work. Last year, we had quite a few projects that we did, and they were actually taking care of some of the pretty rough streets. This year, we're talking about a few more. We are not gonna ignore the bad streets. I want to make sure everyone understands that we are gonna be working towards them. We're just working in sections because of the staging and different things that happen with contracts to get the best deal worked out. Some of the roads that are gonna be done are just plain overlays, and the reason for that is because we don't want them to get worse and cost us more money. But if you have a bad street, we're getting to it. We're allocating dollars. I think it'd be helpful, Bill, maybe if we can put the index on PDF online so people can see what's going on. And there are a few streets that, we have to plant some infrastructure along with it. Those do take a little longer. But a lot of the other streets in your area, by the way, are definitely in discussions to get us to that point.
Good ones.
Yeah.
I just want to add that, thank you, Renee. I just get upset on my street, but it's not lost on me that you are working on many streets that do need it. Thank you for Washington Street. It's been pretty bad. I have old time friends that live on that street. Every time I see them, they tell me, when's our street gonna get done? And now I can tell them that it's gonna get better, because I always kind of didn't have an answer for them. So, I was so happy to see Washington Street. Thank you for all your work.
One more thing I want to point out, which is very important when we had this study done. The cost of fixing our roads and maintaining it at the quality level we have right now is about four and a half million dollars a year. To get to a higher level, we're looking at six to seven million. To get it eighty percent, eighty-five percent, I believe, it was closer to ten million dollars a year. The amount of money we're getting in gas tax to fix our roads prior to the tax that's just been passed was about eight hundred thousand dollars a year. So you can see why we had an issue. It's very important that we use our money wisely. We're looking at anywhere between two to three million dollars a year with Measure G, SB one, and the gas tax. So, we're gonna keep doing what we did last year, keep knocking or chipping away at the bad roads and doing the overlays on some of the roads that are starting to fall into disrepair before it gets too bad. So, great plans are in there, and I think we definitely should have that discussion, bring everybody up to date and the public.
Yeah, I apologize. I didn't realize it wasn't already on, but we'll put the, we'll put the PCI report on, online, and then as soon as it gets updated, we'll update that as well.
Okay. Was there any more questions on that? Do we have any public comment cards?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I made a motion that we accept a resolution number twenty nineteen dash seventy-five, a resolution of the...
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four, sorry. I'm on the wrong one.
No worries.
It's, where am I right there? No, where am I?
You could just say, you make a motion to approve A eight. A eight?
A eight.
All right, there's a motion to approve A eight. Is there, there's a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're gonna move to item A eleven.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also pulled A eleven because I believe all these, all the issues concerning streets and stop signs and so, and looking at the bad intersections and so forth are very, very important to the, to the public, and therefore I want to have short discussions on that, fill them in on what's going on. Thank you.
Okay, good evening. This item is related to city council approval of stop signs being placed at Lad, Line and Hilloc as a result of a study that the city had done for traffic warrant analysis. Back in February twenty nineteen, the city had Kimberly Horn and Associates conduct the evaluation to install all-way stop control for the intersection of Valley View and Union and for the intersection of Lad and Hilloc. The purpose of the project is to enhance the overall safety of each of the intersections by implementing all-way stop control without hindering the overall traffic operations. The study was conducted based on the State of California manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices and provides the city with justification to install the stop signs. The study recommends that all-way stop control be implemented at the intersection of Lad and Hilloc Drive. It also recommends that the intersection of Valley View Road and Union Road remained unchanged at this time and to be studied at a later date. With that being said, that study provides justification for the city to move in the direction to approve the stop sign. It's the city council's choice. If the city council wanted to install stop signs at Valley View and Union, however, the city in doing so without an engineering study may run the risk if something were to happen at that intersection. They may be tied up into some type of lawsuit.
Thank you very much. I have a comment on that report. Both, the Valley View Union is in my district. We're talking about people, districts with the road problems. That's a problem intersection in the mornings and when it's busy. And I know it doesn't qualify yet because the homes aren't in, but I am really worried about, I think everybody knows I'm worried about Enterprise and Glenview.
Yes.
Really worried about it, because that new development is gonna dump right onto there. And every, the amount of people that's running that stop sign is absolutely ridiculous, the one that's there now. And when those extra two hundred and forty homes come in, whenever that is, I don't see it getting any better. I see it getting worse, because nobody wants to stop there. Most of, most of the problem in those particular two places, Valley View and Union and Enterprise and Glenview, is a problem with the drivers, not the engineering on the road. The drivers are just ignoring the stop signs that are there, or they don't want to wait to make the turn, so they cut to the right and go in, go in and make an illegal lane to the right-hand turn and start edging out. Well, the problem is, when you edge out, the person to the right or left of you often can't see where the traffic's coming or going. There's a reason. There are sightlines there that people don't think about. So I, once again, probably fruitlessly, I'm gonna ask that people start paying attention. I saw a drag race going down the airline the other day. The car on the left couldn't get by the car on the right while they were dragging, actually two pickup trucks. So the one on the left just went into the oncoming lane, since it was a two-lane portion of airline. And so the only reason someone didn't get killed is sheer luck. There was another drag race right in front of Kmart, and they ran three times up and down, right in front of Kmart, trying to see who had the fastest truck. In the future, I'll be, I'll be looking toward doing something to make sure we can get some more enforcement, because we got real problems. And these are drivers' problems. Headspace between your ears is the problem, not the road there. Thank you for your time. Thank you for the information.
I could also say one other thing. We are anticipating coming back to the council within the next couple of meetings to bring in our traffic engineer, the consultant traffic engineer, to do a more in-depth presentation to the council regarding, and the public, regarding operations, traffic operations, stop sign warrants and those types of things. And I'd encourage the public to come out if they have questions, ask those types of questions there. Another thing that we're gonna bring forward to the council within the next meeting or so is a request for a supplemental appropriation, because more and more of these types of requests are coming up. And if we have a little seed money to pay for these types of investigations, maybe we can get a few more things done.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lenore, did you have a question?
Yes, I did. I had a couple of comments. Lad Lane and Hilloc, it wasn't an issue for me, but being that Valley View and Union didn't qualify at this time, I, I thought that, I noticed they did the approach volumes twenty-four to seven. But what I thought they were short on was the attorney movements on February seventh report at six p.m. The commuters aren't all home at six p.m. I think any more studies that are gonna use time for those types of things needs to come in a little bit later, seven p.m., to get the full thing on commuters going home. Pretty sure that would have been a higher than. My other concern is the hill on Union Road that Marty refers to is correct, a lot of speeding going on. So their criteria is thirty-five miles per hour versus forty miles per hour on Lad Lane, which is a qualifying thing.
Right.
But this thirty, they're not going thirty-five over there.
No.
They're going forty-five.
It's supposed to be a speed limit.
I'd just like to say for the record that, and that's five miles an hour, and I'm sure their speed, they don't have a hill on Lad Lane, they've got a hill on Union Road. So I think that that should warrant some special review, because it isn't down incline there. And then extend the time for any more studies on attorney movements. Those are my comments.
Okay, thank you.
Danny, I appreciate you bringing it up and the importance of the study. Otherwise, we can face a lawsuit if we don't have a study. I know a lot of the public wants us to put a stop sign somewhere.
Right.
That we know, we think needs it, but if the study doesn't warrant it, we end up in a lawsuit. So, having the engineer explain that to the public and what's going on is very helpful. But, you know, I like that we're putting up the signs now, the flashing signs in different areas. Maybe that's a temporary solution there at Valley View and Union.
It could be. I can, I can have our engineer.
Yeah, I think if we could, you know, have more of those installed around town, I'd be very interested in that. And I think it's helping where we have installed them. Especially one on Fourth, I love it now, in College and Fourth. It's been great.
Those are the radar signs that we funded.
The crossing, no, these are just crossing.
All the lighted crossbars.
Exactly.
They have the radar signs.
Yes, we do.
They're movable. They're sustainable.
Yes.
They're sustainable.
And the chief will, if you have an issue, chief, call chief and he'll have one out.
I think Mike's gonna get a couple of more of those as well.
Actually, those are fixed ones. The mobile ones only have one.
Yeah.
I thought Mike said the new fixed ones were also, could be mobile. They're not a fixed spot. It's maybe six months and six months rotating it. That's what I heard. I'll ask him again.
Okay, any other questions? Do we have any speaker cards on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'd like to move resolution twenty nineteen there seventy-seven as specified.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jenny. All right, public input. This is the time for anyone in the audience to speak on any item not on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speaker cards are available in the lobby and are to be completed and given to the city clerk before speaking. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium, state your name and city for the record, and speak to the city council. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes, but the maximum of thirty minutes per subject. Please note that state law prohibits the city council from discussing or taking action on any item not on the agenda. Do we have any speakers tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We have written correspondence from Joseph Thompson. And our first speaker is Tammy Aviles, sorry. She writes pretty, and it's...
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Mayor, city council members, my name is Tammy Aviles, and I am with the Coalition for a New Community Library and Resource Center. Our vision is to build a state-of-the-art facility, which will house the expanded library, technology lab rooms, meeting and activity rooms, study rooms, and classrooms for students pre-K through college and beyond, for ages like my age. I wanted to bring to your attention, up before the Assembly Appropriations Committee is ACA one Aguilar Curry. This bill would lower the past threshold for public infrastructure construction bonds from the two-thirds to fifty-five percent, and that would include the library. Assemblyman Rivas is on this committee, and a support letter by the city council would be most appreciative. We're sending our letters as well, and I believe the vote is sometime in May. The library is one of San Benito County's most-used public agencies. It had just shy of one hundred thousand visits last year, with over seventy percent of its users from the city of Hollister. So our group is acknowledging the growth in our town, and we are taking the first steps in advocating and planning for the future of our community. We need your support and participation. I would like to mention that last Friday was the one-hundred-year celebration of the library, and wanted to thank Councilman Resendez for being there that night. Please, I guess, check us out at sbcnewlibrary.org for more information, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Kevin Barcelos.
I'm Kevin Barcelos from Hollister. Just wanted to give an update on the spay neuter activities. We had a very successful event at the airport. Thank you to Chief Westrick and the rest of the city management team for, you know, coordinating that. It was at the Fifth and Sixth with the new trailer that Snipus has just put into service. We can now accommodate large dogs at these events. So we had fifteen large dogs, between fifteen and ninety pounds, at this last event. Kind of looking backwards, going all the way back to December, the total count now is we've run four two-day events. Half of those were funded by the public and half by the, by the city, and one single-day event. So nine total days. And that, during that time, we've, we fixed three hundred and fourteen domestic animals, dogs and cats. That's an incredible number, so we're really, we're really proud of that. During that same period of time, we've also had a separate track for ferrets. So, we've actually run seven dedicated Snipus days for feral cats, and three hundred and fifty cats have been fixed during that period of time. So, the goal for, you know, for this program was to do something north of three hundred between the start of the year and kitten season, which is officially underway now. For those of you who don't know, kitten season typically goes from beginning of April to end of June. So we, you know, we're really gonna make a difference in this, in the number of unwanted animals that are born this, this season. Additionally, Heading Home Animal Rescue, who does all the coordination for the trapping for those events, has been fixing ferrets on their own through their existing clinic relationships, and two hundred additional ferrets were done in clinics via Heading Home Animal Rescue. So we owe them a tremendous, you know, debt of gratitude. We want to thank the incredible sponsors that donated to make those feral events possible. So, we'll start with Heading Home Animal Rescue, obviously. Advantage Trust has donated for two feral days, Forgiving Paw's Thrift Shop, and Terry Klein both donated for one day each. So, you know, just the bottom line is, demand is incredible. So appointments are getting filled within twenty minutes of the events being posted. People are, you know, trying multiple times to, you know, to get appointments. We're still doing the proactive canvassery, I talked about in the previous, in my previous talk here. So we've done canvassing... So we've done canvassing in neighborhoods around Earl Hardin and Mission Oaks. And we continue to go to St. Benedict's on Sundays, you know, after Spanish Mass, to really reach the folks in the community that really need this service. And the bottom line is the demand is really there. We do want to kind of acknowledge that this program has had an effect on our existing affordable spay neuter clinic here at Pet Friends. And Rick's going to talk a little bit about, you know, what they're doing. And I would look for the council and the members of the Ad Hoc Committee and Chief Westrick to incorporate the Pet Friends facility into future endeavors in this area. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the good report.
Rick Lopez.
Hello, council staff. Just to kind of follow up on Kevin Barcellos's little speech there. Pet Friends would like to work with the city and help fill in in-between Snip Bus events. There's a lot of people, feral cats, when they come in, if they have to hold them two or three weeks, that can be a problem. Pet Friends can do it on a weekly basis. We actually were planning on doing two weeks, Snip Bus kind of cut into that and really hurt our business as far as the spay neuter clinic. It's still a good thing to have Snip Bus here because Snip Bus does a very important job. But Pet Friends can also fill in in-between the Snip Bus visits as well. That's about it. I'd like to work with Chief Westrick, the city council in the city, and reduce the unwanted pets as well. And Pet Friends can have a place in that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We'll move to the city manager's report.
I don't have much this evening, but would you like me to prepare a letter in support of, was it ACA-1? Or would you like us to do a little bit more research on what that actually is, with the reduced voter?
I think that would have to be the discussion.
Okay, I'll see what I can find for everybody real quick. Other than that, I have nothing else to report.
Thank you. We're going to move to item E1.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This next item is a public hearing regarding an amendment to the final map for the Silver Oaks subdivision. Essentially, the amendment to the final map is just to remove two of the residential lots and converting the area into a retention basin in order to mitigate state stormwater requirements.
Okay, is there any questions from council? A question I have for you, they're going to remove two houses, which is great for me, huh? Like that part. The retention ponds, I know they're using newer technologies now, so we don't have these big ditches anymore. Will they be doing that, or is there going to be some ditch?
This is actually going to be private. My understanding is that it's going to be an open retaining pond.
But can we have them do one that's closed, so we don't have these? Again, I know it's changing, I'm seeing these developments in different places that are using these newer technologies, so you don't have these ditches in there. And, you know, I get a little concerned, I saw one of the developments recently with all the rain. It had quite a bit of water still holding in there.
Correct.
I get very concerned when we have these open ponds, basically. Can't we have a situation where they're required to use newer technologies?
The city is moving forward with the requirements to make it a condition of approval.
We could make that a condition.
Correct.
Can we do that, not only tonight, but for the future?
For the future, yes.
Development, so we don't have any more of these conversations?
Correct, in the future, yes, we could do that.
So we can make that a condition of this approval tonight also?
Correct.
Okay.
I thought we were heading to our underground storage basin. When I was on the planning commission, we were going to start requiring all underground. Is this one not underground?
Well, this one, this was a change that they had to do in order to mitigate the stormwater requirements. Since it's a private development, they could potentially do an underground retaining basin.
Well, they're all private development.
Yeah, go ahead.
H. No, H. Look.
Oh.
Yeah. This particular subdivision's under construction and it has been conditioned years ago by the planning commission. As we go forward in the future, we're going to be looking at putting stormwater underground and underground storage.
When we do a stormwater retention basin, aren't they all, they're maintained by the what? homeowners association or?
It depends. If it's public, it will be in the CFD and it would be maintained by the city.
But we couldn't underground this one?
This, again, this was conditioned several years ago and designed several years, yes. And the reason that it's coming back tonight is because it is an amended amendment to a map that has already been recorded.
Okay.
Councilmember Sendus?
If it's coming back to us tonight for an amendment, then we can make an amendment to it, correct? Because you're saying, since it was approved years ago, now we cannot make an amendment to it. But they need us to support it in order to make an amendment, right? So we can put whatever conditions we want on it, essentially. Am I incorrect by stating that?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Vice Mayor Richmond?
I have no problem in general of doing advanced things, you know, better things. I'm concerned that we haven't established anything in writing about that being a condition. We're just going to come in here and say, well, from tonight on, you got to do underground. We don't know what it costs. We haven't looked at the space they have available where the two lots are going to go in. I don't see, I don't see it makes any sense to, it may make sense to say, take this back and look at it and let the applicant say what they can do. And if they can't do something, why they can't do it. Rather than just put that down as a requirement because we feel like it today. I think that's not the way we do considered changes. That's not a considered changes, that's, oh, well, I like that better, is not a requirement. Do we have currently a standard for these semi-underground or hidden swales to catch water?
No, not really. They are an alternative to having an open basin. The benefit to the city by putting things underground and forcing infiltration into the ground, it recharges the groundwater basin number one, and it also provides for an area over the top that can be utilized as a park.
I like that better, don't get me wrong. I like it better. I don't like, I don't like having an open pond that might wind up to be mosquito, wind up to have mosquito abatement and that fills with water sometimes and doesn't fill with water sometimes. Doesn't wind up being parkland, you can't walk on it if it's filled with water or whatever. I just want to make sure we get some standardized way of looking at it and saying, well, we can apply this. If we're going to start with this one, if this is going to be the future, we got to see if we can apply it in this particular case, since I haven't looked at the map or anything. We're just going to say, oh, well, if you want it, you'll have to do underground or you'll have to do a thing. I think we ought to look at it and see if we can, if it makes any sense to apply it, yeah.
We have a slight clarification here.
Oh.
This particular pond is underground.
Oh, it is underground. I guess that's the end of that discussion.
You could have saved us 10 minutes here, but, you know, I have to say, though, this is a very good conversation. It's important and I appreciate that, so.
Do I get the ignorant award, or who gets it?
The one tonight, yes.
Certainly fits me because I didn't know it was underground.
All right, Councilmember Lenore?
Yeah, this project, it's underground, but we do have some old ones that aren't going to apply to that. But we did discuss it already on the planning commission for the last couple of years, that we want to lean towards the underground for the reasons stated.
Yeah.
That's the planning for the future is we try to get those underground when we can.
You know, as we go through and changes, things, maybe we write a policy and say that all, you know, ponds will be underground.
When they're all possible, sometimes it's not possible.
So before open public hearing, just so we're clear, we are talking about a system, newer technologies, underground, flatter surface, so we don't have a big mosquito swimming pool.
We have the civil engineer here if you'd like to hear it from him.
No, that solves the problem today. I do think, I do think if we want that in the future, and we probably do, I know that's not the discussion, we won't go into in detail. But if we want that, we should write a policy, develop a policy, and have a policy rather than just come in and say, well, that, we're lucky enough that it's on the ground this time.
Okay.
Yes.
I agree.
We're all comfortable with it. Thank you again. Okay, at this point, I'm going to open for public hearing. Do we have any speaker cards?
No, Mr. Mayor.
So we will close public hearing. Oh, were you the speaker card? You were the speaker card. It is still open.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
I missed it, I didn't hit it correctly, so.
Okay. So I did just want to clarify that this is underground, 90 percent underground. In a 100-year storm, there is a portion that will be above ground, maybe for a couple hours, and then it'll drain back down. So it is a depressed area, but at five-to-one side slopes. So it's not like the two-to-one real sharp side slopes you see on the larger ponds. And most of the time, it will be usable space for walking your dog or anything else. It would, in a 100-year storm, hold a little bit of water for a small period. But the majority of it, there's large pipes underground that would be holding it and infiltrating most of the time. And then to go to one of your other questions, this is in a private gated community, so it will be covered by the HOA, so.
Oh, that's what you meant by private, okay.
So, do you have any other questions for me?
No, make your statements, thank you. At this time, we will close public hearing. See the difference in the sound there? Okay. Any other questions or comments from council? Is there a motion?
I would like to adopt Resolution Number 2019-dash-78, approving an amendment to the final map for the Silver Oaks subdivision.
If there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. We're going to move to item F1.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think you're the only one that had the pleasure of going through this whole process a year ago. We have a new franchise agreement for waste hauling with Recology. We entered into that agreement, as I said, last year. We have a rate as part of the franchise agreement. There's going to be a rate adjustment on July 1 of 2019. What we're asking for authorization today is to issue the Prop position 218 ballots. They'll go out to all the affected residents in the city of Hollister with the increase of, I think it's 4.3 percent total. The rate is, will be all published on the actual ballot measure. It has to be sent out 45 days in advance of a public hearing, so we'll get this out as soon as possible. Our scheduled public hearing will be June 17th of this year, 2019. And should the council adopt it after receiving the protest ballots, the new rate will go into effect on July 1 of 2019. I'm sure there's probably several questions. I have Kevin and Kathleen here to answer anything that I don't know. I think Phil is in the audience as well, if there's any questions regarding Recology itself. Or I'm here as well, so if there's any questions, feel free to start.
Okay, any questions in council? Vice Mayor Richmond?
I don't have a question, but I'd like to make a comment to the public. Trash is just an expensive proposition, especially under the new rules. I really urge the public to take advantage of those no-cost benefits that you get if you happen to be a resident of Hollister and have a residential trash pickup. One of which is the twice-a-year, you get a bulk item pickup, provided it has no freon in it. Otherwise, it counts for two. So you call up Recology and they will come and, you know, make an arrangement. They will come and pick the item up right in front of your house. So there's no excuse for dumping your couch out on an empty lot anymore, if you ever had one. And you should never have had one. Phil was kind enough from Recology to mention to me that they have an event this Saturday, once again, like they have a couple of times a year, over at Veterans Memorial Park, where they're going to pick up e-waste. If you bring it along, they will take it off your hands. And they're also going to have a shredder. So you know all those old tax forms you've been trying to hide? They've been laying around your house for 100 years and you don't know how to get rid of them? And if you buy a little tiny shredder, you know, on Amazon or something, it'll take you 10 years to shred that much stuff. If you bring it over there on Saturday in the morning, I think Phil told me it was 9:30 to start. And they will have that monster shredder over there that will shred your stuff. There is a hazardous waste once a month. If you don't know it, I use it many times. Drive over the land, Phil, show your driver's license so they know where you live. And you can get rid of your hazardous waste. That includes your fluorescent lights, your batteries, all the stuff that you have laying around. Those are really valuable benefits. And if the public doesn't take advantage of them, you're not getting your money's worth out of what you're paying. So I urge you to drive Phil crazy by calling him up and having him come all over the place. They also will arrange for a neighborhood cleanup with you and support you on that, which is really important. So I, that's the only compensation I can give you by the fact that it's an expensive proposition and the price is going up, mostly because the CPI's gone up a little bit, the price of diesel has gone up quite a bit. And that's one of the issues. Thank you for letting me make that speech.
Thank you, Councilmember Lenore.
I want to confirm that Marty was speaking about the program for the bulky item. So when he announced it a couple of meetings ago, I took advantage of it. I actually had a refrigerator, so I was getting ready to take to the recycling center. Instead, we rolled it out to the curb. I made an appointment for Monday morning. We rolled it out to the curb and it sat there for a whole day. So it sat there for a whole day and I was already kind of stressed about that because it's downtown. So it sat there. And then Tuesday morning, I called them Monday afternoon, I said, hey, it's out there, are you going to pick it up? Oh, yeah, we're going to pick it up. Well, they didn't pick it up. So then Tuesday came and I called them at 11:00 a.m. I said, you got to come now because I live downtown and this is not a good look for downtown. Refrigerator out there for a day and a half, that was embarrassing. I'm like, I tell them, oh, it's still out there, oh, it's still out there. Well, they finally came, but, and I understand things take time, but maybe a call from Recology saying we're not going to get it today, I would have rolled it back in. But it did work, very thankful, it's a great service, so take advantage of it. You don't have to, they come and pick it up. You don't have to be lifting heavy stuff, so it's a great benefit.
Okay.
Thank you, Marty, for letting us know that because I didn't know that.
Is there any questions about the rate increase?
No, but he talked about it, so I had to give my experience.
I'm going to be upfront, I'm not happy seeing a rate increase this early on. I think the public was shocked into the green container there and having to pay extra for that, which I think surprised quite a few citizens. And it's a very complicated process and I was not part of the Ad Hoc Committee. But I have to say, seeing it increase this early on does not make me happy. And quite frankly, I'm frustrated with it. It's just, it's not fair to the residents. I know there's business to be done and it's a tough business. But these were some of the questions we were asking these early on about increases and being fair with the price and so on amongst all the competitors. And I remember this conversation about, no, we're giving a good price and the public will only see the difference. Well, you know, I've seen the difference and I know the public has. Quality level is great, and I've said that from the beginning, Recology does a great job. I'm just very disappointed seeing this this early. Councilmember Sendus?
Just for a point of clarification, we're not voting on the increase tonight. We're just going to vote on considering it and notifying the public, correct?
Correct, but for those that haven't been really involved in the Prop 218 process, I mean, it's not necessarily a decision that the council makes whether to deny a rate increase or approve a rate increase. What you're doing is you're following the franchise agreements. You're complying with that agreement, saying that you're going to throw out the 218 ballot. When the ballots go out and the ballots come back is essentially when the council's going to be making their decision. If we don't receive, I can't remember the exact number, but it's thousands of protest ballots saying that they don't approve of the rate increase, that's when you have something. I don't, how many did we have when we did the rate?
It was less than 10%.
Yeah, it was pretty minimal last time when we went through the process.
And the number is 50%.
What's that?
It's a 50% threshold, correct?
Correct.
In other words, it's not very likely that we're going to meet that requirement.
Most Prop 218, I mean, the thing about Prop 218 is that it's a great way to make sure that everybody's informed as to what's going on. It really is. But Prop 218 tend to pass on a pretty regular basis, yes.
Let me ask this question. We can't get the experts out.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, they know everything.
Say, by some miracle, you do get a 50% response.
Then there's provisions. I'm Kevin McCarthy, contract staff with the Integrated Waste Management, a regional agency. If you don't reach 50%, there's provisions in the contract where essentially Recology could roll back service or do things to essentially save money because they're legally obligated to get the rate increase. To speak to Mr. Mayor to your comment, if, no matter who the company was that was picked, if it was the RGR company or Green Waste Recovery or Recology, the contract would specifies how the rate increase is come up with. So if it was either one of those other two companies, it would be 4.3%. It's unfortunate timing-wise. The contract was started, we were hoping to start it by November 1. There were delays in the process, so the contract actually started November 1. That's why there's the short window between the new rates in November and now this July 1. Going forward, it'll be every year. I'd also say that this 4.3% is historically high. I mean, the diesel is, everybody knows that gasoline prices dropped for a number of years, and then they've been going back up. And so these are historically high CPI adjustments. So typically, you'd see, you know, 2%, 2.5%, 3%. You wouldn't see 4.3%. So I'm sorry you're upset. I understand.
I'm not smiling yet.
I understand that it's tough to have an increase this quickly, but it is an annual process for every July 1.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Can I make a comment really quick on the 218 process too and being annually? One of the things that you are allowed to do as a council is you can have a, you could adopt maximum rates over a period of years. Excuse me. We decided not to do that this year, so this is going to be for this next coming-up fiscal year. You'll be required to do another 218 process next February or March, or start it like we are right now. You may want to say at that time that we'll do a not-to-exceed sort of amount over the next three years, so you're not doing a 218 process every single year. That's an option for you to consider the next time we go through this process. Right now, this is really just for this next coming-up fiscal year.
Do we have any speaker cards?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Is there a motion from council?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve Resolution 2019-79, Resilience City Council, City of Hollister, approving the issuance of Proposition 218, Notice for Maximum Allowable Solid Waste Collection Rates.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
Motion carries, 4-1. We're going to move to item G1, Reports from City Council Members Regarding Their Committees.
Okay.
Councilmember Lenore?
Yes, please. Should have this ready. Get the dates here. Okay, so I had, on April 10, I attended the Ambac meeting. So Ambac was held over in Greenfield this last meeting, normally in Marina. So I went last, was Wednesday or Thursday, Thursday, Wednesday, to Greenfield. They continue to work on their large plan. They were continuing to work on the plan for the, there's a lot of things here. Should have written them down better. But the overall work program, which is a large document detailing all of the planned work that Ambac's going to do for transportation and funding, so we continue to work on that. The executive director's report did say that 75,000, Caltrans gave 75,000 to the Elkhorn Slew Adaptation Grant. And that's regarding impact of sea level rising. So they have an issue over there, and they know they have to get ahead of that because it has seepage there. Then we, a very important plan that's being worked on is the 2045 Metropolitan Transportation Plan and Sustainable Community Strategy and Regional Housing Needs Allocation Work Program. So Ambac takes care of Santa Cruz County and Monterey County for those arena housing needs. But over here, the Council of Government's office, under the leadership of, in the office there of Mary Gilbert, will be defining our regional housing needs. And that's coming up in the fall. And that's, there's like four components that they consider to get to that number. So I'll be giving you more information. This is the part where we want to pay attention. Very important that we get those forecasts, those Ambac forecasts, right? As Councilman Richmond has stated in the past, and I passed on that, we thought ours was low, the forecast. So I'm going to pay particular attention to that project. I wanted to pass along, too, this was very interesting. Did you know that at the Ambac meeting, Greenfield is the opposite of us on the arena? They have an ample, they've met their need for low-low and low, and they need moderate and above-moderate. And I said, we're the exact flip-flop over here. We don't have the low-low and the low, and we need moderate, but we have this way 600% of above-moderate. So that was really, I never expected to hear that, because I always just know this place. And so it really is chilly about location, folks, when you're trying to do the affordable housing. This proves it. They have the lower income there, so their affordable housing is more doable. The land doesn't cost so much. So they're able to put in their arena numbers. So I found that interesting. And also, okay, I'll just let that one be done. But I'm going to report more on the metropolitan plan. I also attended Water Resource Association out on Mansfield Road with the committee there. Always enjoy that meeting. They do a lot for us in water conservation. Sean Novak always gives a great report. Just for example, we have 1,031 water softeners demolished through the end of March since they started the program. So that's a great thing for our wastewater treatment plant. We only did seven toilet replacements for March. That program's kind of winding down. They were able to run ads for irrigation checks in the various modes that they use, the media, the premier cinemas. So they'll do an irrigation check, and they'll give you a moisture meter. If they have them, they offer a moisture meter. And we're still 24% below our water usage from when we were, we were higher, actually, before. But our conservation efforts are standing at 24% below water usage from 2013. They provide, they did field trips to homeschool kids, which is wonderful, and they also participated in the Farm Day. And then we got to judge the film screening for inaugural water conservation video. There was five contestants. It was very interesting. It was good to see youth involved in water conservation and doing a 22-second video. So we viewed all five of those. We voted, and there's the first, second, and third. And they'll be announced at the senior night and the one in the auditorium.
Yeah.
So I can't tell you the winner. I know the winner, but they're going to announce it at the senior awards. They'll make sure that they get that done. Ad hoc, ad hoc too now, right? So ad hoc is, okay. We had an in-lu parking ad hoc meeting. Did you want me to report on it? Did you talk to Christian?
No.
Okay. So we've been studying ways to provide more parking in the downtown area. This is a downtown area that's outside of the assessment district. So you got the assessment district, and then you got this downtown area that's not in the assessment district. So we're trying to identify how we can provide more parking, because we want to be able to allow some second stories downtown that are not in the assessment district, possibly developed upstairs in the mixed use. You've got some vacant lots that are not in the parking assessment district. So the mayor was wanting information on parking structures, and it's a great subject. I mean, they are invaluable to downtown. But we had the meeting, and we kind of said that the area is so small that we didn't know how we would ever fund a parking structure with just the area we're considering for now. And the study brought about for a parking structure, three-story parking structure with 100-car capacity, it would be approximately 55,000 to 65,000 per space outside of the land cost and the maintenance, future maintenance. So that's a lot of money. I don't think that's feasible. This is my opinion. I'm sure we're going to be talking more. The mayor couldn't get to that meeting, but we've been meeting. So that's the report. We find it's cost-prohibitive to try to do a lot right now. So we decided, I recommended, that we identify a couple of areas for surface lots, which was my intent all along. I know we can't, I don't think we can do a parking structure. We also excluded the cannery. East of East Street is no longer, it's in the downtown area, but we're going to leave it alone now because that's a whole nother big area there, and we don't have available right now. So we're going to look for a couple of service lots, talk to some property owners, see what we can identify so that we can start collecting that in-lu fee to go towards making a couple more small lots, and then we'll be meeting again. So that's what I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I didn't have any meetings. My next meeting with Monterey Bay Air Resource District Budget and Personnel Committee and Board of Directors will be April 17. I did have a meeting with Councilmember Lenore and myself for the tobacco ad hoc. We met on Wednesday, April 10, with Elaine and some of our youth commissioners. We talked about an upcoming town hall meeting, which is on April 17 at 6 o'clock at the Vets. We discussed the agenda, and we will meet again on April 17, no, we'll meet again the following week to discuss the outcome of the town hall meeting. And you want to add anything?
Wednesday at 6:00 p.m., Veterans Building in the main hall. We hope people come that are interested in that, in that subject of a possible ban, restricted or full ban. We're trying to set up for that meeting, and it's been notified, publicly noticed. So that's where we're at. We're going to take comment from the retailers and the youth, and then we will propose some draft wording for the ordinance to present to the full council based on, well, we're going to have another meeting after that. And then after that, we might have an ordinance to draft in draft form. I think we're moving along pretty good, so I look forward to having some closure to that with something that works for both sides of the issue. What?
Councilmember Lenore?
Yeah.
Councilmember Lenore?
Hey, she looks good!
However they want to vocalize it, that's okay.
I just added to it.
Hey, we work together!
Could I clarify? You said a town hall meeting on what date?
The town hall meeting will be the 17th at 6:00 p.m. at the Vets, main, main.
April 17?
April 17, yes.
Okay. And is that all council members present, or just the ad hoc committee?
Just the ad hoc.
Just the ad hoc.
Thank you.
I guess you could come and observe, but they would not be able to participate, right? Yeah. So the other council members certainly could come. We just wouldn't be able to, they couldn't be able to give input due to the Brown Act. That's Wednesday night.
Do you have a flyer made up or anything for the public? You do? Okay. You can share that with us. Please.
And that's all I have.
Okay. Vice Mayor Richmond?
Thank you. I think the only meeting that I attended that's actually a committee was a meeting of the RDA Successor Agency. And of course, that is the agency made up mostly of taxing entities that funded the RDA and are involved in getting paid back by the RDA. And what we did at that meeting was we called some bonds that had high interest rates, and we're going to call those bonds and reissue them. And the net result will be a savings to taxpayer of approximately $165,000 a year, probably through the year, I don't remember the exact year. It was 2031? Was that the, 2033? Thank you. Thank you very much, Mary. Mary, Mary gave me the sign. 2033. So you figure it out. Every 10 years is $1,650,000 saved. And so we're going to do that through 2033. And we're a little blessed with low-interest rates, but the world turns, and that won't last. So now's the time to re-energize it by calling the bonds and reissuing the bonds under a lower interest rate, which means the taxing agencies, which include Gavilan College and the City of Hollister and a whole bunch of other agencies, will have more funds actually going to the projects and less money going to finance the debt. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Resendus?
All right. On 4/4/19, I attended the Intergovernmental Meeting. At that meeting, we talked about the school pickup and drop-off. The chief was there. He gave a very good presentation. Also, John, the Director of Facilities for, I think, the Hollister School District?
Hollister School District.
He was, he was present, and he talked about, I think, what we basically came up with together at that meeting and we're hoping to do is have, continue the police presence that we've been having out there. It seems to be effective. It seems that people are really responding to that. We're short on resources, though, however, so we're going to see if we can continue that. John suggested a heavy education piece to the, to the parents that are picking up over there. I think that's a good idea, as well as possibly trying to stagger the times next year for the two campuses that are dual, that are dual campuses, essentially the one over at HDLA and Gavilan Hills, and of course, Arlo Harden and Hollister Prep School. Those seem to be some troubling, some troubling issues. Next, we talked about scheduling a tour with CSU MB to go and see their health center over there. And I think there was some conversation about possibly them wanting to extend their campus out in Hollister, which is pretty exciting for our community. The last thing, as per Vice Mayor's request, we talked about the Emergency Advisory Committee. I'm still kind of confused about that. Essentially, what I got, Billy, was that there is a committee that meets on a regular basis. I think it's EMCC. Supervisor Gilio was at that meeting. He suggested, maybe we can appoint somebody. I suggested, since the Vice Mayor was interested in that, we could appoint him to that committee. However, they did promise to come and report to us on a regular basis. It seems like there are some things going on, and different types of classes and certifications, we're just not aware of them. So if we can get some updates on that or even representation on there, we would greatly appreciate that. Yes.
Want to talk about?
So, yeah, I'm actually on that committee, along with the fire chief. I think it would be a really good idea to see if we can get one of the electeds actually on that committee as well. It does meet quarterly, but for emergency-type things, we meet actually monthly. It's probably one of the better committees, probably in the county, I would say.
Are you sure you want one of us on there if it's one of the better committees?
Well, sure, yeah.
All right. I'd be happy. If the council so appoints me, I'd be happy to do it. I think, I think it's important that we be represented with elected because we have the majority of the population and we have the semi-urban area. Thank you.
I agree. And maybe we can agendize that for the next city council meeting.
Do you want that on the 22nd or the 6th?
The next meeting, we could put that on there so we can.
Can I just interject? Actually, the committee actually has to vote on it first.
Oh, that's right. There is, not in their bylaws.
So I can, I'll bring that up in the committee.
Yeah.
So now you don't want us in your club anymore, huh? See what you did, Marty?
On April 7, it was a Saturday, the County Parks and Recs Commission was taking tours of the county parks. I was fortunate enough to be invited to join them on one of the parks. It's the regional park behind the high school. If everybody doesn't know where that's at, it's the newly acquired county park. I think the newest one. It's beautiful, absolutely gorgeous out there. The wildflowers are in full bloom. Reach, Parks and Reach, I forgot what it's called, San Benito County Parks Foundation? I believe I got that right. Was out there, and they're the ones that invited me out there to see it. They're really excited because I think it's the first piece of land that city or county has acquired that's going to start piecing together that River Trail. So they have a vested interest in there. They're talking about taking down some of the barbed wire fence and putting some seating area. They're just encouraged. seating area, they're just encouraging, uh, more hikers out there on the trail. It's part of their mission statement. When we were out there, there were a lot of people just running out there. It's, it's really nice to see. Uh, we did talk about the, uh, potential of having a, uh, regional sports complex out there. One of the Parks and Recs commissioners suggested that we talk to, um, the existing teams, I would say, or coaches out here, so we did that on April eleventh. We met with, no, not April eleventh, I forget what day. Yes, it was April eleventh. Uh, we met with some of the coaches over at the high school, Vets Park, uh, some of the local, other people that are involved in sports, and, uh, they're very much in support of, of the idea, in support of the idea, so, uh, that's all I have for you as far as that ad hoc committee. Animal control, uh, we did have a tour scheduled. Unfortunately, on very short notice, it got canceled. We're looking into rescheduling that again, I believe. Um, also, in regards to animal control, I stopped by the Snip Bus quickly. Uh, I just wanted to thank Lisa from Sun Coast Organic Farms. She gave, uh, me some cookies that day, and I gave them to all the volunteers out there, so shout out to you, Lisa, thank you for that. Um, and then, just, yeah, I liked what, uh, Pet Friends was saying, and I'd like to further that discussion, whether we do that in the ad hoc committee. I think it'd be more appropriate, right, to see how we can better support you guys and your needs out there. I think that's all I have as far as ad hocs, our committees. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna work off of some of the things I heard today, 'cause I did miss the meeting. The, the number, if I heard you correctly, the true cost of a parking spot is about fifty-five thousand dollars. And if you remember, it was one of my concerns of planning now, because if we're not careful and we're charging people ten thousand dollars, we have a problem pretty quick. It's not, it's not that we're gonna build a parking garage tomorrow, but my concern has always been that we're gonna be short quite a few dollars, and then the city's gonna have to make that up, and it's, um, I estimate it'd be closer to sixty thousand dollars, and I'm sure, um...
Fifty-five to sixty-five.
Fifty-five to sixty-five, okay. So, I was in the ballpark, and I think we really need to understand the consequences of the fees, or we're gonna pay the price later, and we're all gonna have to make up that shortfall. Wanted to add on to the emergency response plan, make it clear, there is a plan out there in case of an earthquake or anything else that happens. They'd meet, as the chief said, monthly and quarterly as a, as a full group. What they're going to do, uh, is come out here and do a presentation on a quarterly basis, so the word can get out to the public also. And I wanna thank Vice Mayor for pushing that to make sure all of you understand what's going on, and to also join the CERT program, which helps train our residents or get them certified in case of emergency, so they can help. And we're gonna get the flyers on that to get those out to the public. And the other thing, uh, you mentioned, which is great, the school district is gonna look at staggering the times for pickup and drop-off at the schools. It's really one of the only ways we're gonna solve the problem of some of the traffic. And that is all I have for my reports, so we will move on to informational reports from city council. Councilmember Lenore?
I, I think I'm talking...
You covered it?
Yep.
Councilmember Spencer?
Okay, so, on Monday, April eighth, um, I have a, I had a Juvenile Justice Commission meeting. We discussed the population in juvenile hall, which compared to the last few months is up, unfortunately. We are looking to expand programs to fit our clients' needs. Um, on Wednesday, April tenth, I attended a mixer hosted by Casa of San Benito County and Community Foundation for San Benito County. We, they, not me, sampled some great wines from Eden Rift and amazing appetizers from, uh, Fire for Hire Catering. Um, I had a good time, I learned much about Casa and Community Foundation, and thank you guys for the invite. Saturday, April thirteenth, I attended the Walk a Mile in Her Shoes event. The turnout was amazing, and I have to say that I was very proud of the Hollister football team for their participation. Those boys are the, they are just, they're, they're great, they're Baylor Strong. Um, I was surprised to see how well the mayor and Councilman, Councilman Renendez walked in their heels. Resendez, sorry.
Sorry, Roy.
I can't pronounce your, I can't do it. But you guys, really, you depress me. You walk better than I do. Scary. Um, I also attended a town hall meeting, um, that Congressman Panetta spoke at. Some of the to, uh, topics that were discussed were immigration, the Affordable Care Act, and veterans' mental health care. Um, though the discussions did get a little heated, the information was very valuable. Um, later in the day, I also attended a reception that was hosted by Margaret and Larry, God, I hope I get this last name right, Rebekki?
Yep.
Yes.
I did? Yes.
Yes.
Uh, for Congressman Panetta. Um, guests had the chance to have a one-on-one conversation with the congressman. Um, I would like to take this opportunity to say thank you, a very big thank you, to the Rebekkis for opening their home and hosting this event. They were the greatest hosts I've ever been able to meet, and that's all I did.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice Mayor Richmond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have, uh, three, uh, reports to make, in, in no particular order. I also attended a Walk a Mile in Her Shoes event. Um, I'm unable to walk a mile in my own shoes, much less somebody else. Um, uh, but it was a gr, it was a great event. Um, I, 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 I did contribute, um, um, put them on our, our contribution list, my wife's and I contribution list, uh, uh, because I think it's a, I think it's really a, a function that every town this size needs, we really do. I mean, just think of it, it happens to somebody you love and they have nowhere to go, that they are the victim of abuse and they have nowhere to go. Here, they have somewhere to go. It's difficult, it's still crowded, and there's still difficulties in the mayor's house, but at least they have somewhere to go, and I think, I think all the people who are out there did so, uh, and also for the younger people, I believe, um, I, you know, I'm not a, not much of a social reformer, but I think it, it's a good learning experience, that, you know, um, that no one should have to go through that, uh, regardless of, of what their, their thought processes. So, that was a wonderful event, and, uh, yes, some of the, some of the gentlemen with high heels were fantastically, um, uh, agile would be the word I would use. Uh, there were two other reports I have to make. Um, both of them involve ex parte, uh, meetings. I had a telephone ex parte conversation with someone who's going to bring, uh, something of, back in front of the council, and that was the developer for the South of Apricot proposal, and the purpose of talking to him was to find, kind of flesh out what he intends to do there, so I can get a better idea of what, what my position's gonna be. And we did that, and it was a single phone call, uh, with him, and a separate single phone call with some of his engineering staff, one person. Uh, and the second one was, I went to a meeting of the executive board of the, uh, Business Council to talk, to talk about, uh, things to do, uh, to improve the economy here, and that was an ex parte ma, meeting also. And, um, um, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Resendez?
Okay. On four-four-nineteen, I toured a, well, two marijuana facilities on, what road is that, Billy?
Shelton.
Shelton, uh, with the mayor, the city manager, the police department was there. I have to say, I was very much impressed by the entire operation they have out there. It's, uh, it's done very professionally and legitimate. It looks like a legitimate operation. Um, they've got a lot of experience in what they're doing. It's proven, and you can tell just by, from the minute you walk in there. Uh, they're gonna be doing a number of different things out there, and I'm, I'm honestly very excited for them, and I wish them all the success in, in their ventures out there, so I just wanted to point out that, that. Also, on four-four-nineteen, that was a busy day, I, uh, attended the Hollister Pregnancy, Pregnancy Center Dinner, um, over at San Juan Oaks. There was, um, some very touching stories that were shared about their mission statement. I learned a lot about their services that are provided at the center, um, and I, I thought that was important. So, if you don't know, they have like an ultrasound machine, they've got, uh, diapers and formula, and I thought that's important, that we should get that out to the public. Um, on four-ten-nineteen, or, backtracking, sorry, on four-nine-nineteen, I attended a parent input meeting at Lad Lane Elementary with a superintendent from Hollister School District, Mr. Ochoa. I don't remember the exact verbiage of the study that they used. Essentially, they wanted to hear from, feedback from parents, and they wanted to know how to budget next year's budget. Uh, it was really informative, uh, you know, it's good to mingle with the other parents. We learned about, we got to play with technology that they have, uh, but essentially, that's what they wanted. They wanted our feedback and us to fill out surveys and to find out how they should be budgeting or moving things around next year, so it was, it was really a positive experience. Um, they have that online as well, if anybody wants to fill out that survey, it's available online. On four-ten-nineteen, I attended a neighborhood advisory committee at the high school with the superintendent at the high school. Uh, the manager was there, city manager, the mayor, um, some county supervisors. Um, essentially, what we got at that meeting was an update on the construction, uh, not only what they have done, where they're at now, what they are going to do, what they're budgeted out to do over the summer, and then like, kind of like their wish list of what they would like to do. Um, I happen to live right across, essentially like right across the street from there, so a lot of the, a lot of the people in attendance were my constituents, which was nice. Um, it was good to speak with them, and, um, there were some other things that we talked about, and I think the city manager's gonna look into it as far as, um, crosswalks and their concerns, so it was nice that we were all there together to have this joint meeting about, you know, issues that are going around the high school. And, um, oh, the one thing that was brought up, and I've heard this before, and I wanted to bring it up again, especially when we're talking about, um, traffic calming over in, on the west side, was speed bumps. And basically, what they said, and the neighbors, and I agree because I live there, is the speed bumps that were put into place around the high school, they're called speed tables, they're pretty much useless because I think it has something to do with the, with the inches and the, I don't know, but I, I'm hoping that we can address that issue, and we just don't re, keep repeating that, because I've heard from a lot of constituents, like, they want speed bumps, but if we're gonna put speed bumps in that are ineffective, it's just, it's a waste of time and money, in my opinion, so if we can just start working on that. On four-twelve, uh, one of my friends here also said that I was at the one-hundred-year celebration for the library. Uh, Supervisor De La Cruz was the emcee, he did a really good job. There was a lot of other elected officials there, too many to, to probably name, but they had a really good turnout, they gave some recognitions, and we, my favorite part was probably learning about the history of the library out there. They taught us how to use some of the new features that you can find online, which are available now, um, and then they talked about, as she stated, some of their mission statements and what they'd like to accomplish in the future. So, oh, and the bill that we talked about, so we'll probably explore that more. Walk a Mile in Their Shoe, in Her Shoes, I would say, was a, a very, a very successful event. It was fun, like, when we got there, there was a DJ, I, I brought my child, and I didn't know they were gonna have bubbles, face painting, like, it was a party. I have donated in the past, but I've never attended, and I think the biggest takeaway for me, again, was how the, uh, the youth was involved. I'm so happy to see that. Uh, I, for one, am a social reformist, Mr. Vice Mayor, and I would love to see, uh, more involvement. Another big takeaway was that it's not just women, it is men as well, and some of the presenters there shared their experiences with us, which I thought was very brave of them, and, um, it's a really great cause, and I, I just applaud their efforts on making it fun and warm and inviting, to bring such awareness to a very s- serious issue. Um, so, thank you for that. And then, after that, I, along with the mayor and, uh, Councilmember Spencer, did attend the town hall. I unfortunately only caught the very end of that town hall meeting. Uh, we did get to talk to him briefly at the end, but my understanding is that it will be aired on CMAP TV for anybody that would like to see that, so, that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Or, Bill, if we can, I wanna start by asking, what's the update on the dog park? All these conversations tonight about the animal shelter, what, where are we at with the dog park? We allocated three-hundred thousand?
We do, we have the turf, um, I, let me check, 'cause the Jerry gave, uh, we put in our CIP, I think, with three-hundred thousand dollars in a turf repair program, so I'll find out what the status is on that.
See, I, I've spoken to a few people, and they're still concerned that nothing's been done there, so, I know we found all the bombshells and all that.
Everything, all that cleanup stuff is done, right. I was out there today, and there seemed to be a lot of people out there, but I think, 'cause the grass is green, it looks nice, but, or the weeds are green, I'm sorry.
Make sure we're filling the holes, 'cause we don't hurt any of our pets. I wanna thank the third graders at Spring Grove that invited me over for a conversation, and I, every time I go visit a school, I'm just so amazed by our young people and the creativity, the ideas they have, and they, they lay it right out. They ask you point-blank, and I'm like, whoa, boy, okay. But, uh, great teachers over there, and, uh, we had a lot of fun, so thank you, Spring Grove. As was mentioned here, Walk a Mile. It's one of, to me, one of the most important events we have in our community. I, I attend it every year. It's very hard for myself to attend events on Saturdays, 'cause my kids go to school in San Jose on Saturday, but I always make time for this event. One person asked a question of me of, basically, is this just a waste of time? What's the point of this event? And I pointed out, it's awareness, it's getting the word out to men and women that it's not all right to abuse your partner, bully others, and it's, it's a fundraiser for our women's shelter here in town, so even if you can't make the event, uh, send a check to the mayor's house. It's very important. I love going out, wearing my heels, so, I, I do practice.
They were snazzy. And they, they, yeah.
And I'm, I'm thinking about wearing to all the council meetings from now on, and I think, um, it's important, and I wanna thank, I see Supervisor Jim Gillio, he was there also. Supervisor Jaime De La Cruz was walking around on crutches, his knee is out, and he, he tried his best. We finally got him a wheelchair for the last leg of the...
[laughing]
I, I, I felt bad for the guy. By the way, uh, Mr. Gillio's shoes were pretty, pretty nice, too, I'm pretty impressed. Councilmember Spencer and, uh, Mr. Richmond for being there, and of course, uh, Councilmember Resendez, and the football team. I'm, I'm just so proud of those boys for, for being there and standing up and...
Those are my boys.
If this is our community, we're, we're, we're doing really well, so, thank you, everyone that was involved in the Walk a Mile. Afterwards, we did attend the, uh, town hall with Congress, Congressman Panetta. The question I asked of him was about San Justo, reservoir getting it open. He said he's working hard on it, it's moving slow, but he's gonna stay on top of it. He will be sending us a letter to give us an update where he's at, or where it's at in the process. He promises he will not give up on San Justo or Clear Creek, so I'm very thankful for that. Afterwards, my feet were tired, so I did, uh, accept an invitation by Marcy Houston to go visit her shop, The Garden Shop. If you haven't been there, it's on Seventh Street, absolutely beautiful, great place to go sit down and, and have a beer, and I did just that. And I recommend everybody, go out and take a look at this place, it's really a beautiful shop, and she put a lot of love into it. We also heard we had a high school update, and again, just so many good, positive things happening at that high school. The science building will be open, and I believe they said this, December of next year. Just, my son, I tell my son every night, "Son, you are the luckiest kid in the world." He's starting high school next year, and he couldn't have picked a better time, so, um, thank you to the high school. Bill, I wanna bring up a very important item for me, and, um, it's about our residential growth, and I wanna have a discussion here about a moratorium. I think it's gotten to the point where we're having extreme issues in our community, and I think what we should do is have a moratorium until we at least get the general plan updated. I, I go back and I think about the letter from the CHP captain, uh, writing a letter saying we shouldn't be approving anything else until this gets fixed, Highway twenty-five. Uh, today, I was watching the news and traffic reports, Highway twenty-five, really? Highway twenty-five now is the focal point of our news traffic report. It's gotten out of control. We're seeing pressure on our own city as far as departments needing more help. It's not all gonna work. Our money is limited, and I'm very concerned, we're gonna have a downturn in our economy, and we're not gonna be able to make this all work, and I, I just wanna be in front of this until we can get a better plan put together, at least an update to the general plan, so, I'm sure maybe some of our, my fellow councilmembers don't agree with me on this, but I'd like to have that discussion. to have that discussion. I think it's very important that we include the public in, in that discussion. So if we could agendaize that, I would, I would appreciate that. Okay? I knew that one would be a little tougher for everyone, but I, I have to put it out there finally. I'm seeing things that are just really concerning me and I, I've been very vocal about this, but I'm seeing the financial part of this. I strongly feel that we're going to have some financial issues upon us soon and I'm, I'm very concerned. All right. So let's go now to city manager.
With that, I'll, I have nothing.
That's just perfect.
For how many days is it?
City attorney?
No statement, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Chief?
I have a couple, actually. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're doing a, actually a traffic unit feasibility study right now internally and we'll couple that with a staffing study, once that comes out as well, to kind of give you a real good picture of that. As you saw in the, the last meeting we did with the Intergovernmental Committee, we had some numbers to give you and I'll update those numbers and probably do that probably about mid-year to give you a, a real good picture of where we're at with that. So I think it's important to know what's going on around the schools and of course, generally in, in all the districts as well. And just as, on a personal, there's actually a free rodeo this weekend at Bellato Park. Free, free entry. June 11th is the law enforcement torch run here in downtown Hollister. It'll start at the fairgrounds, end at the PD. All law enforcement in our community is going to participate in that. June 22nd is the downtown parade for Saddle Horse Show and the 20th and 30th, of course, are the Saddle Horse Show at Bellato Park. That's it.
Thank you. City clerk?
I just wanted to do a reminder that April 27th is going to be a full day. We'll be starting at 8 o'clock out at Ridge Mark and ending at 6:00 PM. Sunday, we'll be open to the public here at the council chambers, the workshop. The facilitator will be here currently. I think we tentatively have Sunday set for 8 to 12. I'm hoping, I, I know at one time we spoke about maybe adding ethics onto the end of that, but I'm thinking an 8 to 12 is a four-hour day already. I don't know how you all feel about adding any more onto that, Billy. I know we were kind of kicking it around, so I just wanted maybe to get a little direction to see how you felt and maybe, Billy, I don't know if you've given any more thought to that.
What we did is we started an ad hoc committee to deal with ethics, code and ethics, so I don't think it's necessary.
So we can say 8 to 12 then for Sunday and then?
What's the purpose of that?
The purpose of the 8 to 12 is to have the facilitator go over some of the commonalities that he found with each of you on Saturday.
That's a two-hour interview on Saturday for each individual. So we're only there two hours.
Correct. Right. So what he's going to do is he will find the commonality with what you each say.
Okay. And reporting a public meeting?
And that'll be like, obtainable goals?
Okay. County Mayor Richmond?
I think 8 to 12 is good on Sunday. I think four hours is good if we can get to the point where we bury the hatchet somewhere other than in each other's skull. I think that would be, that would be a major accomplishment. I don't know if we should add any more on that. Merely getting to there would be, would be a big step, in my opinion. 8, 12 is fine.
Okay. Any other questions, comments on that? Everyone all right?
No.
Okay. I thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to go to move to item G3. Does anybody need a break?
No.
Okay. We'll take a five-minute break.
Okay.
Almost came on stage there. Almost had it.
No students?
No, it's spring break. There is.
No students?
There's no students. It's spring break. Hey, Asher, Cam, hang over here. I want that tizzy one. There's a tizzy one. Oh, you missed that. I did. Wait, I think I might have another one.
You want it?
No, I don't, no. Here, I don't have any. I like those. They are doing great.
Good evening. For you, for folks that don't know me, I'm Kathleen Gallagher, Integrated Waste Management Manager. I wanted to just give you a very brief introduction. We're going to be talking about some integrated waste management. We're going to talk trash for a very brief moment and some recycling. Selena Stotler, our recycling coordinator and green business coordinator, is going to be talking about some events coming up this Saturday and about our green business. For the folks that are new to the council, because it's so brief, I'm happy to sit down and meet with you anytime to give you more detail about what I'm going to briefly be covering. So real quickly, do we, presentation, sorry. So real quickly, Hollister, the county, San Juan Batista entered into a joint powers agreement in 1995 to cost-effectively meet the state mandates, AB 939, which requires 50% diversion from landfill. These are, these are just a synopsis of some of the mandates that we've got. Organics diversion, AB 1826, and SB 1383. I'm not going to, again, I'm not going to give you the broad details, but what's happening with state mandates is they're becoming more complex and more numerous. And so these unfunded mandates coming onto our jurisdiction. So what we do is the county as the lead agency, is we report as though we were one jurisdiction. So Hollister, San Juan, and the county, I report to the state as though we were one agency for meeting our diversion programs, meeting our household hazardous waste programs, et cetera. Commercial recycling, AB 341. These are the programs that, thanks to the new franchise agreement that we developed and Recology is now implementing, is now helping us increase our commercial recycling rate. So real quickly, these are the top, these are our top priorities, meeting the state mandates. The issues are, if we don't meet the state mandates, they could put us on a compliance schedule. If we don't meet the compliance schedule, they could fine us. There are some jurisdictions that have been fined, so obviously what we want to do is meet the mandates, do as much as we can to, to, to meet those requirements. Our joint powers agreement, and then we also have a cost-sharing agreement. We have mandates that, that we are to require for our Hollister and San Juan jurisdictions. So those are our top priorities. We really want to develop cost-effective programs. We want our residents and businesses to participate and, and maximize participation. Thank you to Vice Mayor Richmond for noting these programs as part of the new franchise agreement. Outreach and education, really getting free programs to our residents to stop illegal dumping, to stop putting medical waste down the toilet or illegal dumping are some of our priorities and that's how we're gearing our programs. Public education and outreach to our residents and of, of course, effective budget and grant management. The next, the next page basically talks about, these are some of the programs. Again, thank you to Vice Mayor Richmond about the programs that we're offering to our residents. Household hazardous waste drop-off events. We are working with Recology to get this notification out a lot more frequently to our residents. The bulky items, recycling, so not only at our curb site twice a year, but also quarterly up at the landfill. And then there's also free recycling every day of the week at the landfill as well. A free used oil and recycling, bulky item, again, the quarterly event. We did start a new free mattress recycling program. So you probably see sometimes illegal dumping at the side of the road. We have instituted a new free mattress recycling program up at the county-owned landfill and we are seeing some, some anecdotal evidence of declines of illegal dumping. Free compost giveaways, Selena will talk about that, of our event that's happening on Saturday. Construction and demolition recycling, and then safe sharps and medical waste drop-off for free. So those are the, the programs that, in a nutshell, we offer to our residents. Selena Stotler is our outstanding recycling and green business coordinator. She's been with us for three months. So she's going to talk about our new events and our new green business program.
Hi, everyone. So, our local green business program is a free service provided to businesses in Hollister and throughout San Benito County and funded by state grants. The program aims to help businesses reduce their operating costs and impact on the environment and is specifically offered to small and medium-sized businesses. Although inactive for the last few years, our program has become very active in just the past eight months, thanks to dedicated staff, local partnerships, and environmental businesses, business leaders in San Benito. This is a statewide recognized certification and efforts are led by a coalition of cities and counties like integrated waste management that ultimately make our communities healthier and more viable through free technical assistance and a certification process. You can find programs like this across the state and the nation. Aside from improving our communities' health and reducing environmental impact, businesses see several benefits. First, our program provides free, sorry, provides easy framework for a business to be more sustainable through a green business checklist and they receive that free technical support and equipment from our staff and partners. We stay up to date on rebates available for our business and now have access to green business reimbursement grants up to $500 to help enrolled businesses implement green business practices on their checklist. Certified businesses will receive free recognition and promotion at the local and state level, which is good for the business and for economic development throughout San Benito. Green businesses also attract new, new customers as well. But one of the greatest benefits we hear from businesses are the cost savings through waste reduction, energy efficiency, and water conservation. These are benefits that businesses will see, but all of us benefit through improved economic development and healthier communities. So the green business sectors include energy, water, pollution prevention, waste, and transportation. Listed here are examples of common green business measures like reducing water usage, commuting sustainably, recycling, and reducing waste. In 2017, there were 3,557 businesses certified throughout California. As you can see, this program has impacts that benefit us all, like gallons of water saved, greenhouse gas emission reductions, waste diverted from the landfill. Right now, we have 25 San Benito businesses enrolled into our program. Thirteen of those are businesses in Hollister and here is the list of those businesses. These are our six certified San Benito businesses, Jayleaf, Suprema, Fisher's, San Benito Arts Council Annex, San Benito Arts Council Art Space, Body Mechanics Massage Studio, five of those being businesses in Hollister. And here is a quick video. As I mentioned, a benefit of certification is free promotion and rec. benefit of certification is free promotion and recognition. This is a great example of a video created by one of our program partners and edited by our team, highlighting local leader Fisher's, the first restaurant in San Benito County to be California Green Business certified. A few more slides. Almost done. Okay, so, really quickly, I just wanted to announce a new fun educational event in Hollister for all ages, our first annual Earth Day celebration. Oh, it's me. Yep. At Veterans Memorial Park from 10:30 to 3:00 PM. We have over 20 partners. A few of us are here today, including RGR Recycling, Recology, and San Benito County Chamber of Commerce. There is going to be interactive Earth Day activities, art, food performances. Recology will host their Environmental Day activities, which includes the compost giveaway, the paper shredding, and the e-waste collection, all free to residents. We are also having a, announcing 15 winners from an art poster contest where we received 107 entries from pre-K all the way to 12th grade from all of our schools in San Benito County. The 15 art poster contest winners will have their posters on a Recology garbage truck, and here is an example of one of the winners from Hollister Dual Language Academy, 7th grade. And here are a few more examples of what Hollister residents can look forward to at this event. Residents can safely dispose of unused or expired medication. Bring your bike and receive a free bike check, safety check by off-the-chain. There will be affordable local upcycled art for sale, and Earth Day partners like Wildlife Education and Rehabilitation Center will be providing educating activities. If there's any questions, this is my contact information.
Any questions from council? Councilmember Sendez?
You said there's a stipend for going green? Did you say that?
A stipend? I said that there was a $500 reimbursable grant through our green business program.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions from the public?
No, Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Thank you very much. Good job.
Just a quick note. We moved across the street from each other. I've known her since she was five years old. So, it's actually kind of fun to see somebody, as I'm leaving, come up and be somebody.
All right, we're going to move to item G4.
Good evening, Mayor Velazquez and council members. This is a report on the last Pinnacle Gateway Partners Meeting. It was held in King City on March 14th at the Robert Stanton Theater. I've been driven through King City a lot of times, right by King City High School, and never even noticed it. It's, it's rather large. It was built in 1939. It has Joe Mora base relief sculpture. It was designed by Robert Stanton. It's in the Art Mordant style, and it has capacity for 1,100 people. And apparently, when it was built, the city could fit in the theater, because it was a much smaller community then. At the meeting, we had our typical update from the superintendent. It's an interim acting superintendent right now, Lisa McKinnis. She'll be interim, and then replaced by another interim, and then they'll finally have their permanent superintendent. The Pinnacles National Park has just entered into a contract with the new concessionaire to operate the campground and the store. They're from the Santa Barbara area. We're hoping that they'll be coming to our next Pinnacle Gateway Partner Meeting in May, so we can encourage them to have kiosks with information about things to do in our gateway communities. The, one of the issues that was discussed at the meeting that the superintendent mentioned is they're looking into getting a variable message sign. If you recall that, when there was the government shutdown, there was people driving to the park, and they couldn't get in. I reported at the last report regarding this, it was quite a few people. They also have parking issues, especially on the weekends this time of year, and so they're hoping to have something like that to communicate to people. If they do have something like that, maybe we can get a little kiosk by it, so if people want to hike, they can find out other places to hike in our community. Someone at the meeting also suggested, his name's Peter Guerin, he's from the Orellana Seaco area, that another approach could be to get an AM radio with a band with a loop that could, he said that might be more cost-effective. He said they could be about $8,000 for one location, but that band could probably explain other information as people go through. There was a general discussion, which is something that seems to come up at every meeting, about the need for shuttle services. So, that's something that we're looking into. We had a meeting that focused on that last May. We had representatives from Caltrans there, and from Ambag, and Monterey Selena's Transit, and the San Diego County Council of Governments. So, we're going to be looking into that still. There was some discussion about the government shutdown. I think one of the takeaways from the partners is, is that as a partnership, one of our missions is to support the park as a resource. They had problems with trash during the shutdown, and we were caught short. We didn't really have any messaging, so that's something we're working on. And one of the things that we learned also is, is that as national park employees, they were forbidden from communicating with the public and the media. So, we just see that this is an area where maybe we can help in the future. As always, there's a short presentation at the meeting. It was from a gentleman that has, Robert Walton. He's a retired school teacher from King City, and he's been doing rock climbing at Pinnacles since 1976. So, he shared some nice stories. He showed us the equipment they use, and that they call, they call themselves the Masters of Mud, because I guess the, the rocks more freeable there than in some, a place like Yosemite. So, at our steering committee, we reviewed the Hidden Gems brochure, which should be coming out, we think, within the next month. That shows out some of the hidden gems in our gateway communities. The idea behind that, again, is to message to people that if you want to enjoy the park, go there on a weekday, but on the weekends, here's some other things you could do if it's too crowded. The next gateway meeting will be May 15th. It'll be in San Juan Batista at the Veterans of Foreign Wars Building at 58 Monterey Street, and the featured speaker there will be the superintendent of the Juan Batista Anza National Trail. That concludes my report.
Councilmember, Vice Mayor Richmond?
Thank you. I'm interested with how, just want to know, how detailed our discussion, or how many people had recommendations concerning a shuttle service? Was there any, was it a serious discussion, or was just a, oh, we need a shuttle service kind of level discussion? Not that that's not serious, but I'm talking about, was it just a very short comments about, we need a shuttle service, or would people started to talk about which parking lots you could use? For instance, the one over, over at Belado Park, or across the street with a former golf course?
That's been part of the ongoing conversation. I think when, when I mention it, I mention our parking garage. I mentioned you could park in downtown Hollister, because part of the drive when former Congressman Farr was our congressman to get Pinnacles changed from a monument to a national park was economic development. So, there's transportation challenges on this, on the west side entrance also, because the road is very narrow as you come in. There's a constriction, so it's too narrow even for some buses. And so, cars back up because they have to let, take turns entering and exiting. But, we did, when we, we had a collaborative clinic in 2016, and transportation was identified as an issue. There were some other issues also discussed, and we do try to identify places where people could park. I, I've been working this month on trying to provide an informational report at our next meeting on transportation. I've contacted Moratomi, who's the director of Ambag, and then I've, I'm also contacting a couple other organizations. We, when we had the meeting a year ago, we talked about applying for getting the partnership, because we have this shared resolution of support from King City, Solid Ed, Greenfield, Hollister, Monterey County, Samio County, San Juan Batista. We talked about applying for a joint Sustainable Community Strategy Planning Grant to see what the feasibility would be of a shuttle service. We have recognized this is just a weekend, but we also think the shuttle could be used for our wine trails. It could also be used on the weekdays, perhaps to, if the economics support it, to get people up to medical appointments in the Bay Area or to the airport.
Does the Pinnacles itself, it has a maximum amount of people they let in, in addition, forget about, regardless of the parking. So, they have a certain limit? Do they max out on the weekends on the amount of people they allow? They allow to get in?
They are, they are stressed. So, they have shuttles within the park to move people, and that's something they've talked about, because it's a national park, it's a national resource that needs to be protected for future generations. And so, one thing they could do is they could add another trail. They have a new, newer acquisition on the east side called the, it's the Baker, I think, acquisition, and so, but they couldn't say at that meeting in May what their capacity is.
Okay. That's, that's my question.
But they, one of the issues is if people are waiting a long time in line, then they're not having a good experience.
When I was, a long time ago, when I was at your, so you don't even have it anymore, at that time, they had some motorized, I don't remember what kind of motor it had, some motorized, you know, open carts, or whatever they call them, that you could ride around in if you weren't a hiker. And, and they had sufficient, that's not available currently at the Pinnacles, right?
They, they have a shuttle that takes you from the parking lot near the campground up towards where the, the trailheads are. So, they use that in the busy season, but there's a wait to use that shuttle.
Okay, thank you very much.
And the busy season is longer. There's also strategic things you can do. They have good dark skies. They have dark sky programs. So, if you go at 3, you're, it's not going to be as crowded. You could stay, maybe have a picnic dinner, and then they have dark sky presentations. So, some of it is trying to get people to change their behavior, and as gateway communities, we can all help with that.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Do we have any speaker cards? No. Thank you for the update. Can we move on to G5?
Good evening, Mayor Velazquez, City Council. My report today is with the Recreation Department on Treat Streets, the Hollister School District Free Lunch Program, and some special events and potential events that Hollister Recreation would like to offer. This past October 2018, Hollister Recreation offered its first annual Treat Streets event, and Treat Streets is a safe Halloween event for families that visited 42 downtown businesses. Some of these local businesses offered candy and/or hosted a craft activity from the storefront and engaged with local families. Businesses that were not located downtown had their booths on the street. The event brought over 1,500 people to our downtown Hollister, and some of our downtown businesses that are not, are some of our businesses that are not located downtown were Radio Shack, Hollister Super, Grocery Outlet. We also had support from our Hollister Police Department, our Fire Department, and CHP. We offered a costume contest, and we had 40 people registered, different themes. We had families that participated, children ages, we say a zero to three, but it's just infants, three months old or so forth, four to seven years old, and eight to 14 years old. We also had the Lighthouse 55 Bakery provide cookies and cupcakes for our cake walk. The Ladies Auxiliary offered a haunted house. We had a no-scare haunted house between the hours of 4 and 6, and then a scare, scary haunted house between 6 and 7 for the older ones that wanted to participate in that. We also have a hula group. Our Hollister Recreation Dance Instructor Jennifer Ray organized a flash mob, and we had a group of people dancing to Michael Jackson's Thriller. On Sundays at the Hollister Community Center in September and October, residents and local law enforcement attended weekly rehearsals so they can attend this flash mob. Recreation staff passed out over 400 Halloween bags filled with first aid kits, provided by Hazel Hawkins Hospital, and toothbrushes provided by the Hollister VFW post 9242. And flyers were put inside the participants' bags for participating local businesses that gave out a 20% discount to any items purchased in their store for the month of November. Participating businesses competed for the best themed decorated storefront or booth, and this past year, Johnny's Girl was our first winner, and they happily display their trophy in their store. So, every year, we will get that trophy, and the next person, the next business will be able to display it in their storefront. Recreation will begin planning, and our kickoff meeting will be Friday, April 26th, from 8 to 9, at the Veterans' Memorial Building in room 218, and I would just like to invite council to help us out with this fun event. Next item is the Hollister School District, the Free Lunch Program. Hollister Recreation has participated these past three years, and last year, we collaborated with the Hollister School District, last summer, I should say, we collaborated with the Hollister School District again. On Mondays, recreation staff set up at Dunn Park from 11:30 to 12:30, and on Wednesdays, we partnered with the YMCA at Valley View, the Whale Park. Hollister School District provided a free lunch program at Dunn Park on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays. So, Dunn Park was covered Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. And in the summertime, Tuesdays and Thursdays, recreation staff offers a free tennis program for children 10 and under, and we partner with the United States Tennis Association, offering HITS, and HITS is for honesty, inspiration, teamwork, and sportsmanship. We have provided this program for the past four years, and what we do is that the children will participate in the tennis program, and after, we remind them that there's a free lunch program over by the playground. So, if they'd like to attend, they can, after an hour of workout, they can walk over and pick up their lunch. We also partner with the San Benito Art Council and offer, with the Free Lunch Program, we offer, offer art in the park, and this is the program that we offer July as Parks and Recreation Month. So, we collaborated with the Art Council, offering art in the parks, and then on Wednesdays, we go over to Valley View for Science in the Park, and that is a partnership with Technova, and in addition, we offer our free lunch. That is our next meeting, where we're going to start having some discussions on our free lunch program, and that's going to be next week, next Wednesday, with the Hollister School District. Just so you guys know, Recreation offers a variety of youth sports. Some of our free programs include exploratory movement class for children under five. Our HITS tennis, where we have 50 participants, and a red ball tennis, which is after the HITS program, they advance to a, a hit, and it's a little more advanced for this age group. We're in season for our Nike Marathon Run Club, and that, we have 75 children enrolled. Our Junior Giants program offers baseball, softball to over 600 kids, participants. We just ended our Junior Warriors program, where we had 300. We just ended our Junior Warriors Program where we had 340 kids participate. And on Saturday, we offered our first ever 49er prep flag football league. We have 264 participants. Some of our other programs where there's costs associated is hula and karate. We offer a family zumba, yoga, soccer, basketball, volleyball, STEM. And this year, Recreation is wanting to partner with a group and offer a STEM camp along with a British soccer camp. We also offer three seasons of softball with approximately 70 teams participating, and two seasons of adult basketball where we have around 26. Some of our special events that we offer is a Fourth of July Downtown Parade where we offer, we give away cookies and drinks to children 12 and under. I talked a little bit about our Parks and Recreation Month. This is where the community can participate in 25 events throughout the month. And if they do, they're entered, their name into a drawing. Last year, we gave, Grocery Outlet gave us a gift basket, and we were able to give it to a young, young five-year-old girl that was pretty excited about receiving her camping gear so she can make s'mores with her mom. So, she was pretty excited about that. Movies Under the Stars, we partner with San Benito County Arts Council. This year, we would like to close part of the Seventh Street. And we'd like to have neighbors come out so they can have sidewalk chalk art, if I'm saying that correctly. It's a tongue twister, but, and then we have, they'd also like to have dancing in the park before the movie begins. So, we're collaborating. And then we just feel when neighbors interact and connect, the neighborhoods become safer. Breakfast with Santa, we're going on probably 35 years of Breakfast with Santa. And we offer a free breakfast to the first 250 children that come through the door. We also partner with Kids at the Park in collaboration with the Safe Kids Coalition. And then this year, Downtown Hollister, we will be offering our superhero 5K run July 27th, and we are inviting all of our heroes to run. And any of our proceeds from the events help offset the cost of our free programs that we offer through the city of Hollister. We also partner with MLB, and we do our Pitch, Hit, and Run. And then we partner with the Live Like Gino Foundation for our three-on-three basketball tournament. We do have a potential, I know Councilmember Rosales, you were requesting some ideas, other types of events that we'd like to offer within this next fiscal year. And we're considering a St. Patrick's Day event, whether it be another Shamrock Run or something of that event. We haven't put our heads together, but we'd like to offer something in March of 2020. We like to offer a Makers Market where it's not, it's local businesses that are offering what they created. It's not something that you would buy online. We want local vendors that create their art, their woodwork, or anything else, their jams that they can sell. I know there's a lot of community members that produce wines and food. So, we're trying to do something of that nature, and that's, we're considering that in May. A spring jamboree, we don't want to go in, offer a same program similar to VFW. VFW offers an Easter egg hunt. So, we're not trying to offer anything that's the community is already offering. What we'd like to do is offer something different. And, you know, we have the clubhouse, a beautiful clubhouse. We're considering having the Easter Bunny come, and you can take pictures with the Easter Bunny at affordable cost. We're talking about some spring activities out at Dunn Park, related arts and crafts, any type of gunny sack races, or just fun little activities that we can do out at Dunn Park for a few hours. And that, we would call the Spring Jamboree, kind of a kickoff to spring. We have in collaboration with Samyel County Chamber of Commerce, we like to offer the Taste of Hollister in August 2020. And we would like to invite local wineries, restaurants, and brewery companies, just kind of hang out, see what Hollister has to offer, family fun events. And we'd like to do a Kid Zone where it's still family-friendly, where it's, and you can bring your children out. We're also considering, it's called Dinner with Hollister. And residents have the opportunity to have dinner downtown, here in downtown Hollister, down San Benito Street from Fourth to South Street. They have the opportunity to have dinner with their neighbors. And then, we have a toast at 6:45 where the whole community or the people that are involved in our event can have a toast. We will consider a table decorating contest, and then have a family game area near the courtyard. Well, I believe the Recreation Department will provide excellent events. These opportunities are only feasible with correct, you know, staffing and funding. The Recreation Department works well collaborating with other agencies and volunteering outreach with, volunteer outreach with the Hollister Kiwanis, the Key Club, and the Samyel County ASB, or Samyel High School ASB. Extra staff would provide great opportunities and help to expand on some of our events downtown. And that is the report for Recreation. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions?
A lot of information.
Councilwoman Rosales?
Whoa.
We have some great ideas. We're...
You guys do a lot for our community.
Thank you.
I brought it up because I just wanted the community to know what you guys do. I wanted to highlight the success that you had with the downtown, and I keep torturing that name. Treat Suites?
Treat Streets.
Treat Streets.
Trick or treat.
All right. It throws me off every time.
It's okay.
And then, of course, for the summer, I just think it's really important that we have as much recreational opportunities for our kids with a wide variety, you know, just because that's, it's just really important for their wellbeing. I see all of the potential that you guys have. I really appreciate everything you do. I'd like to see more things like the Treat Streets and the other things that you said, especially downtown. It just seems like when I go to other cities, they're always, they've always got these really great events. And how can we better support you guys? I want to hear from you, what it is that you need to make those things happen, and how can we better support you in that? Because I think it's really important for our community and for our children and our families.
It is important, and that family unity, the community that we want for our community is important. I think the best support that we could have is just making sure that, I mean, Recreation, we're probably the lowest on the totem pole when it comes to funding. And I think that we can provide some really great activities. I would prefer to have a coordinator that, another coordinator that can help with some of these extra special events that we do. Because currently, we can do these other events, but the new events that we, the potential events, we would definitely need something, someone to help us with that.
I just want to say that I think it's really unfortunate or sad that you feel like you guys are the lowest ones on the totem pole. Because essentially, you do preventative work that is very important to where we, if we get these kids and families involved in the activities that you're providing, we wouldn't have to fund other agencies to kind of offset that. If we could just probably sit down, or if we could agendize it, I don't know the correct process, but I'd really like to see how we can better support you and your department.
Absolutely, and I appreciate that. What I did notice is we don't have a liaison, I guess Recreation, is it a liaison, am I saying it, a liaison from council? So, if I can even have someone to help support us, and we can go over these types of events that we want to do. And of course, we do a good job partnering with the community out there. But I think that would be the first step, is support from the council.
We can, thank you. We can put that on along with the, Marty's appointment there.
That was what I was going to say.
You can add on if we're in agreement for the next meeting, a liaison for Rec Committee from the council, the Recs Department. Okay, Council, Vice Mayor Richmond?
So, taking all that into consideration, what do you do in your spare time?
[laughing]
I wanted to take the time just to say thank you. That's an enormous plateful. And just the fact that you say you're going to start your Treat Streets planning in April impresses me because in too many cases, not us, but in many cases, people start planning like three days before the event. But you're way ahead. I am very impressed by what you do on a limited budget, I must tell you. I believe in giving credit where credit is due. And you, the Recreation Department, all aspects of it are some of the reasons people love to live here. I know, I know, I was shocked when I found out we had 70 ball teams competing, trying to use the, trying to use the baseball field. That is an enormous number of participants when you think about it. That's people, that's one of the reasons I love it here. There's so many places you can't, you can't find the play, the space, and you can't find the support that you get, and you do it on a very limited budget. And I, for one, would be very open to, because you are doing such a great job to get you the funding and the help you need to do even more. Because it is a direct impact item as far as, as far as our residents go. So, I thank you very much for that very comprehensive report and hope, wish you well.
Well, thank you. I was asked to cut it short a little bit. I didn't know where to cut, so I just kind of skipped some words, but...
There's more.
There's a little, yeah, I got it. But I thank you, and I appreciate your guys' support.
Do we have any, oh, you have a question, Councilwoman Rosales?
I also do want to thank you, you know how long I've been involved with Rec.
Yes.
Even when I was a little girl. But boy, that program's really come a long way. I had a question, though. Are we able to offer the swimming lessons? That's a big program. I know you listed the whole bunch, I'm thinking the one you didn't. That was so vitally important to the youth to learn how to swim. We have too many kids. Or are we calling it San Benito Aquatics now? Are they going to be kind of leading the charge? Or teaching the youth how to swim? Somebody needs to, is that, that was their plan, huh?
I think that is the plan. That was my understanding. Yes.
Tina, the most thing I would like to see us do for you is support you in getting a new location. You're, I don't know how you guys do it, sorry, but if she asks what we could do for her, this city rec is just outgrown. It's a lot 20 years ago. So, I hope that the city can plan in the future to get you and your department, more equipped space, to even run a more, a more expanded program. I know that you guys would probably love to have something more room. I don't know how you do in that little office, but thank you so much for the report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments? No? Okay. Thank you for the report. All right, we're going to move to item G6.
Good evening, Councilmembers. This is a report on a draft memorandum of understanding with the Economic Development Corporation and the city of Hollister. I'd like to ask Erin Johnstone to come. He's the chair of the Economic Development Corporation Board. And Christine, can we have the PowerPoint, please?
You know, on Friday night, I got some practice for these long meetings. I was at the Giants game. And we had two kids, and they weren't going to leave. And we got back, they had a fireworks show afterward, too. And so, I got home at, yeah, I got home at 3:00, so...
Good thing is, this is not a long meeting yet, so we're good.
And it won't be anywhere close to that. Well, thank you for having me here. My name's Erin Johnson. I am the chairman of the Economic Development Corporation. I'm serving that capacity as a volunteer. We have no paid staff currently right now. My day job is with Granite Rock Company. I'm a vice president there, and I've been there for 21 years. Granite Rock Company, if you don't know, has been in our community 119 years. And we're happy to live, work, and play here. So, it's important to us to have a healthy, thriving community. Now is a real good opportunity to advance economic development in the county. We've had past efforts to economic development and different funding sources of Comet, Wax, and Wayne. But we are at a point right now where there is a chance for the city council to double their money with an investment, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. And I think you have an opportunity to grow that money even more by increasing revenues, tax dollars, and spending in the community and investment in the community. We need to build staff for the EDC so that we can be sustained and we can aggressively pursue a five-year plan that we've been scoping. We know that economic development's a team sport. There is a coalition of economic development agencies that are meeting regularly, and we are working together very well. You'll appreciate in my presentation that there'll be an ask for money for the EDC, and we're also supporting the ask for the chamber who will present next. It's a package. It's not one or the other. It's a collaborative process. The collaborating organizations are listed there on your PowerPoint, and I'm, in interest of time, I won't read those all off to you, but we have, we're meeting monthly, and we have, for a good period of time, we've defined our roles, and we're making sure that we amplify people's messages and we don't detract from each other's roles, which we've also defined. Some of you have participated in some of the comprehensive economic development strategies that we've undertaken in the past couple of years. Many people in the community did. We have the county's general plan, which has a fiscal element that also outlines some unfunded and economic development activities. And I think you'll see, when we hear from more of them public after my presentation, I think the other groups are ready and eager to get this going. What we're proposing here today is funding for five years to get the investment and momentum into real economic growth. It's going to make it possible that we can do team building. It's going to make it possible that we clarify roles and responsibilities, and we keep them clarified. And we have a unified county message that we all can speak to and point to. We need to advocate for a good business climate, and only with a good message can we do that to grow and retain our businesses and attract new businesses. So, you will have your packet, and in your packet, on the left-hand side of the packet, you don't need to reach for it now and read through it, but is a role description for a full-time economic developer person. And if you do feel compelled to thumb through it while I'm talking, there's also a five-year plan of likely activities that we would task that executive director with prioritizing and ranking in there. But I'll talk to a couple priority of those in a second. What's it cost? We're estimating it's going to be about $200,000 a year. It's about $110,000 for a staff position, $30,000 for benefits, and $60,000 for program development. That would include bringing in expertise as grant writers and maybe some other technical experts, we'll talk about a little bit. I think we can, with that, we will get our common five-year plan that the whole county, cities can agree on and support. We can coordinate our efforts much better there, and we can also tap additional resources as we have been doing, just with the volunteer staff and doing some contract work. And I'll talk a little bit about that. Our outcomes is we want to retain our industries that are here, our businesses are here. We want to grow them. We want to help them grow, because if you're not growing as a business, you're dying as a business. And we want to recruit new businesses. And we want to recruit the right businesses for San Benito County and the city of Hollister because it's not, businesses don't always work in all communities. So, we want to make sure we identify and attract the right businesses. And we want to bring more visitors and support other organizations with tourism. And you'll hear about the chambers' efforts here with the San Juan Committee in a second. Right now, with some of the seed money that we've received from, the tentative seed money we've received from the county of San Benito County, they were, well, we will start with the Business Attraction Plan, the Wine Trail and Visitation, that's what the San Juan Committee and the chamber is working on. Broadband is a grant that we're looking to get right now. We've got our SEDs, our Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, that lets us go after USDA funding. And there is rural broadband grants that are available that we're looking at and pursuing. We've already started talking with that office. There's, the government shut down and that delayed a couple of things. But we would like to amplify the rural broadband as well as the local broadband efforts that the city's actually been pretty progressive in pursuing in the past. And then, we want to start looking at some coworking space opportunities. There's been some people at the city of, at the Monterey Bay, Monterey Bay CSU MB, there's a... UMB, there's a gentleman over there that's been looking at incubator space and co-working space there. We have people that leave our community every day to commute out of it to go do work somewhere else. We want those people back in our community and that's probably gonna be a first and hard initial focus, because you keep those people in the community, they spend your money here and they're not on the road, which I think is the congestion we're all trying to alleviate. That was pretty fast, because it's a little late for me, but I would like to entertain questions from the council.
Thank you. Is there any questions from council?
I had one question for clarification. The, your, your initial number up there, two hundred and thousand?
Two hundred even for five years.
Yeah. That is between the county and the city, or just the city or just the county?
I would like that to be between the county and the city. And San Juan would be a part of that, too, but their funding frankly would be a little bit more modest and so we wouldn't be looking at, that would be gravy, that wouldn't be.
That was my question.
Vice Mayor, I'm sorry, Councilmember Sinis.
I have a question. I was looking in your packet here. It says, "Active recruitment will shift the economy towards stronger employment and away from forces favoring housing development and outcommuting." What does that mean exactly?
What, out, outcommuting?
More particular, away from the forces favoring housing development and outcommuting. What does that mean? Can you explain that to me in layman's terms?
I'm not, can you help?
So it says, "Active recruitment will shift the economy towards stronger employment and away from forces favoring housing development and outcommuting." I'm more interested, interested in how this is gonna affect the housing development part.
The, the outcommuting part is the part I've been focusing on. I haven't been focusing on the, the housing development. We, obviously, we all understand the state of California has a housing crisis and people are having a hard time sheltering themselves. And so obviously, some housing level development would be appropriate for any healthy community. And so supporting the growth of people in the community with housing seems to be in alignment with economic development. Outcommuting, saving the outcommuting is, is a, is a double win for us, because we keep people that are wasting resources, leaving the community, spending their money outside of the community and, and frankly, not having the quality of life they could if they got to work here and play here.
All right. Thank you.
Aaron, I appreciate what the volunteers do and I've, I've always thought groups that work together as volunteers really are some of the most successful groups. When it becomes a situation where we're hired staff and everything else, then it becomes more, how do we keep getting money for the staff? The focus seems to get lost. We've been down this path before with this group. I was not impressed and I kind of warned about some of the issues I saw and sure enough, that's what happened. I'm concerned already with the city's financial situation and people keep saying, "Well, why are you concerned?" Well, because we have cycles and over the last few years, we've spent a lot more money than we probably should have, which I've been warning about. And I, I know that downturn's coming and I want to be prepared for it. I don't think it's wise to put ourselves in a situation of a commitment of $100,000 a year for an effort to, to lure our businesses or different ideas. I think your group, as a, a group that meets, of volunteers, can do the same job and bring back some of the ideas and see if we're gonna implement or if we agree with some of the ideas. I think for too long, we've been so focused on, if we just build more and more houses, that'll fix our problem. It's, it's created a bigger problem. Now, you're right. Those are going out, how do we bring them back? That's a different question, but that's a question of, it's basically very simple. It's, we need, we do need to promote for outside businesses to come in, but that's relatively simple. It's not that complicated. We just need to put it out there and there's several ways to do that. But to go on with the idea of the strategy of, let's just spend $100,000 in this group, $100,000 in that group, and let's throw one more $100,000 over there, that's a lot of money that we could use for direct advertising and probably get, quite frankly, a bigger result. So I'm, I'm concerned about that. I don't want to see this turn into what it was in the past. I like that you have this group that's been working hard volunteering. I don't like the idea of, let's go back down that path that didn't work very well for us. You know, there was a, a short window where there was some opportunities that had happened and it worked, but there was a large portion of time where it just absolutely failed and even though everyone was warning about it, we kept down the path because that's what we were doing in the past. I can't support it for that reason. I think it's just wiser to keep going on the path you're on, working as a group, bring back ideas. I think, you know, we've all talked about the wine trails and different things, but it's not done. It's, this is not rocket science. It's, hey, let's just allocate our, that's from the county side. You know, it's more of a permitting issue. How do the wineries get their permits to do events? What else do they need to attract more business? How do we advertise? Well, that's something we could do already. There's a lot of good things happening here. I just don't understand or agree with the thought of, let's hire a staff person for $110,000, $30,000 in benefits and we're gonna get a better answer out of it. I think you guys, again, are doing good, good work and I'd like to see it continue that way. I just can't support putting another $100,000 towards something, especially now when we, again, as I've expressed, my concern for our finances and our roads. That's a lot of road money that'd be fixed, so. Thank you. Councilmember Linnor?
I disagree. I think it's the perfect timing for doing this program here. You laid out a beautiful plan. There's one thing that resonates in the community is, there's not enough business here. And how do we get more employees to work here? I don't know how you do it without doing this, this program right here. It was a lot of factors the last time. It wasn't just, it wasn't working. It was a six-year moratorium and a growing recession. That's why it wasn't successful. And this is when you want to do it, when there's an upturn in the economy, people are more positive. I just don't see, we talked about return on investment. Is this gonna have a return on investment? I believe that it is. And I gotta tell you, I fully support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion. Okay. Do we have any speaker cards?
G six, Review of the Draft Memorandum of Understanding with the Economic Development Corporation Development Services, sorry, that's just the department. Jack Murphy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I am speaking tonight for Ted Davis. I've got remarks that he prepared. Regrettably, his father passed away, so he's out of state, but he very, very much wanted to be here tonight. So I'm going to speak really in both the first person and the third person here. Ted was very pleased that the city is considering reinstatement of the position of Director of the EDC. He's glad that we've moved Technova to Hollister in 2004. Ted is the founder of Technova. There are a lot of resources here and things that have worked out well for the company. There are very few technology companies here and we are missing out on the synergy that occurs when technology companies cluster together in a region. Presence of other companies would bring more engineering, more scientists, highly skilled technicians. A company like Technova requires machine shops, electroplating, automation, robotics, hardware, software services, electrical, HVAC, plumbing, construction, et cetera. Technova's put, puts about $20 million into our local economy on a per-year basis and they are growing at a rate of 25% per year, and that's year-on-year since that time. And if you look at their complex right now, continues to grow and will be growing more. When Ted was at Genentech in the nineties, they wanted to build, Genentech wanted to build a manufacturing plant within an hour or two of South San Francisco. So they put the word out. Vacaville vigorously pursued Genentech and they ended up moving there. Soon, other pharmaceutical companies joined them and they ended up with seven significant pharmaceutical companies in the area. Synergy is an important part of success. People move from one company to the other and talent that lives in the area stays in the area. Nobody wants to sit in traffic and commute, nobody. That could have been Hollister. I have my own personal story on this, but in deference to time and Ted's message, message, I'll continue. Hollister has more to offer than other communities, when you're objective about it. Ted is personally connected with two private equity firms. One is the large group of investors called Kiritsu, which is similar, if you're familiar with Shark Tank. They fund a lot of small startups and often they provide space in one of their buildings and dictate where they should set up shop to save money. Most of the investors are retired, volunteers if you will, but they're also in it for the money as well. To be ineffective at economic development, it would be wise to hire somebody who is well-connected with the financial community in Silicon Valley and the balance of the Bay Area. As most of you know, Google rented space adjacent to Hollister Airport to develop their autonomous air taxi. There are approximately forty companies in the Bay Area working on solving some aspect of the autonomous vehicle problem. A well-connected venture capitalist or private equity investor in the field will have relationships with many of these companies. These are the groups that finance them and this is just one single example. An aerospace company in Morgan Hill called Ten Kate has drawn many companies into their, their company. And again, in deference to time, for us to succeed, we need to hire someone who is already successful in this discipline and who is well-connected. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you very much.
Bob Tiffany.
I'm president of the Business Council. I'm also a volunteer. Unlike Aaron, I come from a very young organization, only a hundred and nine years old. Let me first of all say that I could not disagree with you more, Mayor Velazquez. Your comments this evening, it may be the first time I've heard of a, of a public official be against job growth. That's what this proposal is all about, is job growth. This community badly needs jobs and we have a situation where the county has voted five-nothing to support the idea of bringing in Economic Development Director. Volunteers are great, but they are volunteers and they all, and they have jobs. And you need, as Mr. Murphy said, you need someone who has expertise in this area. And this is the time that we need to bring in someone that can bring in more jobs, get people off the road and, and bring vitality to this community. Business growth is the, really the engine behind an economic vitality in any community. And what we've seen over the last thirty years that I've been here is we see this wild swing of growth, no growth, growth, no growth. It sends a terrible message to the business community and that's why we've been so ineffective over the years in, in bringing as many businesses as we might otherwise have here. Technova is a perfect example of how you can have a success. Working with the city, working with city staff, we were able to retain the growth of Technova here. They're bringing many jobs as community. That brings revenue to the community, which brings and pays for services. You talk about expenses, yes, I'm in business, too. I'm concerned about the next downturn, but you have to have revenue to, to deal with the services that this community wants. And so this is an absolute critical position and it works in concert with what the chamber is gonna be doing in bringing tourism and helping bring revenue from people that don't live here. And once again, the county has voted five-nothing in support of this with the caveat that the city also support this. So you, you have a matching situation. Now, that is a very effective, effective way to do business. Thank you.
Just want to clarify again, Mr. Tiffany, I'm sure you didn't mean it this way. I never said I was against job growth. I'm very pro-job growth. I just have a different view of how it should be accomplished and my view is, you know, we could put $100,000, $200,000 to some advertising to get a much bigger return. Judging by past experience. Thank you.
Graham Mackey.
My name is Graham Mackey. I'm a, thank you to Mayor Velazquez and the council for listening. I've lived in this community for forty years and I've been in business for thirty-eight of those years. It's been very successful for me. I think it's a wonderful community to own and operate a business in. And listening to the City Council meeting today, if anybody came from the outside and listened to the first couple of hours, they would be overjoyed to hear how much activity we have going on, lot of opportunity for children. This is a great place. But for it to continue to be a great place, we need jobs here so that our residents don't have to commute and waste a couple of hours of their lives every day. And my own children, I have two, I told them, I used to be in the gasoline business, so commuters were great, because they used a lot of gasoline. I told my kids, "Don't commute to work. Stay, you know, work and live where at the same place." So I believe this is a great opportunity for us to be able to attract businesses to move here. Our land is a lot less expensive than it is in the Bay Area, so that's a great benefit. And once people, you know, come down here and get to see what we have to offer, they'll, they'll move here, but we need someone to move them. We can't do it by running ads in a paper. We need somebody aggressively going after those companies that fit the bill. So that's what I'm planning. The benefits to the community is that these employees that now can work and live in Hollister can also provide better service to their community, too, because they have time to serve on committees and look after children's sports and do the things that a lot of us see, these guys leaving at daylight or dark, getting home in the dark, they don't have the time to support the community. So I'm asking the council to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Salvador Mora.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. I'm also in agreement with the previous speakers. I think this is something that we need. I think they've all spelled out why you should vote in favor of it. You know, it's nice to have volunteers. It's great, a lot of things get done, but we do need someone that's dedicated to get out there and recruit these, these, these businesses to come in. Running ads in paper or social media or whatnot online, that's great, but it's different than having somebody dedicated full-time to doing what we need. We need more revenue. It's, it's, it's simple. It's very simple, simple economics. So I'm shocked to hear that our mayor isn't in favor of something like this. This is a great investment for our city and county as well. And it's great news to hear that the Board of Supervisors unanimously approved it. I think that's, that's great news. We don't know what to see eye to eye, but that's great, especially when your, your, your pal, Jaime over there also voted for it. I think that's something that we really need to get done. We want to ease congestion from, off the twenty-five, that's the way to do it. Get businesses here in town, in the county. That way, they can enjoy the businesses that we do have here in town and those businesses will flourish. Families will flourish, because now they don't have to spend time commuting and the businesses, you know, and that's more sales revenue that we're gonna be getting, because we're worried about not having enough money, because these houses and all these new people are coming in and taking up all the money from, from our city funds. You know, so it's, it's just, you know, something that we need to support to get this done. I was a former commuter. I leave my house at 5:10 every single morning. If I left at 5:15, I was gonna be five minutes late to get the sound aid to start by seven. Okay? Okay? Now, the reason why I chose to work for Santa Clara County as opposed to San Benito County, huge difference in pay, huge difference in pay. Once I showed my wife there, the difference in pay, she had no problem getting up early and making my breakfast and lunch, and shooting me off to her, because our family benefited and so did our kids. But they suffered at times because I was exhausted by the time I came home. So businesses here downtown, you know, talk about spending money downtown, since I am, I no longer a commuter, I probably will be in a couple of months, but I actually go to breakfast four or five days a week, Country Roads can attest to that. I'm giving my money to the city, and that's what we need to do. So if we have an opportunity to spend a little bit to get a lot in return, I think this is definitely the thing for us to do.
Thank you. You're lucky you're able to convince your wife of that. Mine won't wake up at five, 4:30 for me.
I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
No more speakers, okay. This is just a report.
The report does have a recommendation. We're requesting that you direct us to return.
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor has a question.
Would you finish what you were saying, please?
Yes. This report does have a recommendation to provide direction on any changes to the draft MOU and direct staff to return with a resolution to adopt the MOU between the Economic Development Corporation and the City of Hollister.
Thank you. So I would like, since the mayor saw fit to jump the gun and give his opinion before we heard the public speak, and I've done that on occasion, maybe more than one occasion. So I understand how that is. So I'm not blaming anybody, it does happen. I'd like to give my opinion. At some point in time, I remember, you know, we never got to the moon because the first rocket we sent up didn't work. Everybody remember that? The second one we sent up didn't work, and the third one we sent up didn't work. In fact, there was a whole bunch of them we sent up didn't work. Based on what I heard earlier today, or just recently here, is we sent a rocket up, it didn't work, we should have quit. So therefore, that would be the end of that. And the same thing goes for the locomotive, the same thing goes for all the technology you get in healthcare. You think you walk in there and somebody just tunes it up the first time and it just works perfect. So we had a program, EDC, here, it didn't work. Of course, there were a lot of outside influences at the time, and maybe we had the wrong person doing it. I mean, that, hey, that happens. But the comment that, you know, I try not to get too personal, the comment that really irks me is this, all these comments, time and again, about how easy it is. Oh, it's easy, we just take a, if it was easy, I guess we would have done it. We've got 11,800 people, according to the Mercury News in a recent report, commuting from the City of Hollister, every day, every workday. 11,800 people commuting every workday from the City of Hollister. And perhaps, there are some people in this city who want the gasoline tax more than they want somebody to have a local job. I think it's crazy, myself. We either got to decide whether we're fish or we're foul. We only got 37,000 or 40,000 people in this city, and we've only got 60-some thousand in the county. And we're up against San Luis Obispo, has 225,000 people in the county, and a major college. We're up against Santa Cruz County with a major college and a beach. We're up against Santa Clara County, the biggest economic engine in the state of California. We're up against Monterey County, it's got the aquarium, and they, we've got more people living in City Hollister than they got in the City of Monterey. But they get $15 million in tourism, and we're not going to get $15 million in hotel receipts. TOT tax, TOT tax, because we don't have an ocean. So we better go get something. And what we better get is some jobs, and they need to be good. Now, you're going to grow an oak tree, but we want to grow one without burying an acorn. Well, it doesn't work like that. You've got to bury the acorn. And it could be Technova, it could be some company we never heard of, but you've got to start somewhere. Oh, I support this. This, I hate to use this terminology, and I'm sure somebody will write in a newspaper how reckless I am with the public's money, but I'm going to tell you something. Hundred thousand dollars is chump change. I want you to know that the mayor, who's sitting here opposing this, was willing to give the local hotel $2 million in our TOT money to get them started, but he won't give a hundred thousand dollars to the local businesses, one of which all by itself puts $20 million into it. When I went to the Walk a Mile in Her Shoes program, I saw the name of a whole bunch of companies up there supporting that program, putting money into our mayor's house. People are taking home paychecks, and like the old rock and roll song said, you get a job, okay? You all remember that? Get a job and you got a life. What do they tell you? Get a job before you get married, get a job when you get out of school, get a job and you got a life. Now, if you want to go live in the woods and not earn a regular income, that's okay, that's still a job, but you got to get a job. You can't just sit around. We can't be a county, San Benito is not big enough to be a county that walks around with a third of the money making what agriculture pays and a third of money out of work, a third of people out of work. We've got to get local employment. And I'm willing to invest a hundred thousand dollars a year for five years in local employment, because you can't do it in a year. It's so easy that no one can do it. That's funny, we can't do it either. You've got to make a long-term investment, just like you do when you go to school. You don't go to college for a year and you get out and say, well, I'm through. You try to go until you graduate, and the graduation here is five years, I guarantee it. And you'll be lucky to get it in five years. Look how long it takes us to do anything here, and look how long it takes us on the city council to do anything. Sometimes it takes us a year to run a contract through, okay? Many, a couple of members of this council are in support of doing a three-day motorcycle rally, and it's taken us two years to get to the point where we can do a three-day motorcycle rally, but they want to get 11,000 jobs. It's easy. It's not easy. It's hard, and we need a professional to try it out. And if we fail, guess what? We're going to try again, because we cannot afford to pass up on the benefits. This has really got smoke coming out of my ears, I got to tell you something. We can't afford not to have it. You want to know why people are going to lose their house? They're going to lose their house if they're unemployed, and they're going to be unemployed if we're not diversified. If we've got all our people working in Santa Clara County, they catch cold, we're going to catch pneumonia. Okay? We need a diversified workforce. They need to be in a lot of companies, and they need to be local, where they work here, and they stay here, and they live here, and they contribute here. And the only way to do that is to make an investment. And I'm willing to take our hundred thousand dollars and put it up and get a hundred thousand dollars from the county. And believe me, if you can get a dime out of the county, you're doing really good. Okay? I'm going to tell you something. So it must mean something. It must be worth something, because they're as tight-fisted as you can possibly be, and I'm willing to do it. So everybody knows where I stand. I'll put the corks back in my ear so that the smoke goes back inside, and that's the way I'm going to do it, and that's the way I'm going to vote.
Thank you. Councilmember Sinnes.
I too wanted to hear from the public before making my statement. There is no doubt in my mind that we need a viable economic development plan in place to help revitalize our local economy. Most of us up here just came off a campaign, and this was one of the most discussed issues during the campaign season. Our local economy is not just struggling, it is being strangled. Most recently, we have experienced a boom in our residential growth while not maintaining our infrastructure, quickly making Hollister a struggling bedroom community. Some of our previous political leaders and community leaders have been justifying actions that led to these trends by stating, we need to grow through residential developments in order to have a more viable local economy. They believe that if we build more houses, then we would eventually hit a magical number of population in order to attract more businesses to Hollister. The problem that I have with the plan that is being presented in front of us today is that it has been created and is being supported by that very same group that has gotten us into the mess that we are now having to face. Unfortunately, the only thing that has grown besides residential growth is the frustration of the public because of the actions that these people and their friends, I mean, partners have led us to. This group of individuals is known to get their hands on other persons' funds, fail miserably, yet spend more time and money coming up with a so-called new and improved plan to get even more of your funding. It is insane and completely illogical to keep throwing money into a failing model. I just want to reiterate that I do think we need to support a sustainable, viable economic development plan. I just cannot bring myself to support a group of individuals that have proven time and time again that the only thing they're capable of sustaining is spending other people's money without producing successful results. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, yeah. Let me, I want to step back again. Want to make sure we're doing, we're correcting a few comments, and as I said, never did I say I'm opposed to job growth. I've been sounding that alarm for years now, focus on job growth, not residential growth. Problem is, we need a better plan, not just, here's what we could do, we hire a few people. We've had a lot of great opportunities in this community, and if you heard me correctly, what did I say? Let's put this team together, it's there, long-term right now, let's hear their idea, what we can focus on that we support and we can back up. That's what I said. I didn't say, no, I don't want any ideas. I said, let's hear the idea that we can back it up and really fund it correctly. And there's a great idea that we can back up and go after it, we should be going after it. And let's be honest here, we've known about Google here for several years, and what have we done about it? I've been saying it over, why aren't we focused on this? There are areas we can focus in on, but we need to focus, and that's been my issue here. What are we really focusing on? Let's hear from the group of volunteers of focus, so I can fully support that. I don't have a problem with that. And let's make sure we understand something. I heard a comment, again, misinformation. And it's, you know, maybe it's just confusion. This comment about we gave a hotel $2 million to come here. No, no, we did not. We did not give a hotel $2 million to come here. What we did was work hard to find a way to bring hotels here, and part of that plan was, if you do build here, some of this TOT money can go back towards your cost of building here. And guess what? They decided to build here. Didn't cost us a penny, because if they had not built here, we would have had zero dollars from there. No dollars came from the general fund. So we got to be clear about what we're talking about. Of course, there's going to be different views on this. And when we talk about the motorcycle rally, it takes us two years to make a, decide on a rally. No, it doesn't. No, it doesn't. And I'll tell you, it's very frustrating for me, because that first year we decided to bring back that rally that brings 50,000 tourists to our community that have money and are looking for places to build their businesses, we decided we're going to commit to this thing for ten years, so we can build the belief and the reputation again. Within two years, within two years, a majority of the council decided they didn't want it anymore. So it's not that we can't make a decision, we just can't stay focused on the decision. We have a rally that brings so many visitors here, nothing else we do can touch it. And how much have we ever put into this rally? Zero dollars. Zero dollars into this rally. Yes, it is true, because I've been on this council for quite a while. So I can tell you, if you want to bring tourists, there's a real simple way to do it. And for $50,000, we could bring a lot of them. But we have to decide as a community and stop just saying, oh, it's this fault, that fault. Look, very simple, I'm just asking, what is a focus, is a good idea or not, rather than, here, you just hire somebody, 130, 140, 150,000, and this will magically make it happen. Folks, sorry, it's not magically going to happen. And we could spend five years, $500,000, and keep wishing. We need to understand what we want to become. And I've said this over and over. Do we really want to become the housing capital of the world here for Silicon Valley? No. We have a beautiful community. We can bring in employers, different jobs, but we need to be focused in on what we're trying to accomplish, not just saying, here's more money, let's repeat the pass.
Mr. Mayor?
On this side first. Councilmember Lenore.
I just don't understand your comments, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
We have a volunteer group here that's put a plan in motion, proposed plan, first year goals, second year, third year. They have a thing all listed here on what they're trying to do. So how do you accuse them of not having, did you read the staff report? The staff report is very comprehensive on what they're trying to do and when they're going to do it. I don't know how much more you could want from a group that's a volunteer group. This was, then the executive summary lays it all out. I don't know, you're just, I don't understand your direction on economic development. It's, as Rowan said, the hot button on issue on the running campaign is jobs. I'm sorry, but you need to read the staff report more.
I value your view and your opinion. Councilmember Spencer.
Well, Councilmember Lenore said it. You wanted input from volunteers, and everybody that spoke here are all volunteers for the Economic Development Corporation. I think they have put together an amazing layout of what they want, and as Vice Mayor Richmond said, it's an investment, it's a hundred thousand dollar investment. And this, I think, is a great investment. We want jobs here. They're going to work at bringing jobs, and that's what we need. We need businesses coming in here. Whatever has been going on for the last six, seven, eight years isn't working. You've been mayor since, what, 2012? Jobs are leaving here, businesses are closing down. We need to invest in this, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Richmond?
I think, I think Councilmember Spencer has a good point. You know, if it's so easy, why didn't we do it for, since 2012? Okay? I'm telling you, it's not easy. The idea that, I can't imagine more of an insult than to blame Tiffany Ford for housing. I don't know, how many houses have you built? I thought you were in the, I thought you sold automobiles. How about Granite Rock? You've been here 119 years. You guys build a lot of housing developments here? I don't think so. In fact, if I remember right, you haven't built any. Maybe you build a house for a couple of your workers, that's about it. So I guess we can blame you for everything. It isn't the housing market in California causes what's going on, it's you guys, okay? Because you built housing. None of that changes the facts on the ground, is that you've got 12,000 people commuting. Apparently, we've forgotten about that. Apparently, we'd rather have people drive their motorcycles in and go to Johnny's Bar for three days, three whole days. Well, I don't think that's going to save the City of Hollister, because when they leave on Tuesday morning, on Wednesday, the 12,000 people who work out of town are still going to have to get in a car and drive to Santa Clara to their jobs, okay? Unless you want them working in a bar. And if you think anybody's going to stay here through July to stay in the bar and keep drinking for a month, you're wrong, okay? I mean, this is outrageous. These charges are just nonsense. These are people looking for a scapegoat, okay? Why don't you go ask the people who live in those houses, would they rather live in the street? Is that what you think? Is that what good government is about? Throw them in the street? Come up with a bigger homeless plan? We graduate 700 people from our high school every year. 200 of them go to college outside of town, the other 500 of them, we say, get the hell out of here, because we don't want any more houses. Don't get a job here, because we have none for you. This is crazy. This is crazy. I mean, who are we throwing out? We're throwing out people who lived here, whose families have lived here for 50 or 60 years. I run into them all the time in Santa Clara. When I was up, I, I told a story, I was up at, at the Cancer Center, and my wife was being treated, and there were three young ladies working there who live in Hollister. We started talking, and they said, why do you work up here? There are no jobs in Hollister. Well, how did that happen? I mean, after all, I'm going to quote the mayor, because I respect him, he said, it's easy. It's easy. We just take $100,000, it's easy. The truth of the matter is, it's hard to get to the truth of the matter. That's the truth of the matter.
Thank you.
I'm going to, no, I'm not through. Thank you, I'm not through. The mayor is not telling the truth. He's not telling the truth. That hotel agreed to stay here for $1 million in TOT, he personally brought it up to $2 million in TOT, and they had an agreement at $1 million in TOT. So he's not telling the truth, when he said, we had to give him $2 million to come here. That's not true. Okay? And I, I expect people to come up here and tell the truth, not to lie to my face, and I'm through now.
And I'll repeat again, I did not lie. Councilmember Sendez?
I want to be clear about the financial impact. We're saying, oh, it's a small investment, it's $100,000, it's nothing. They're asking for $500,000, and the next item that's on the agenda is asking for close to that as well. So we're talking a million dollar investment. We up here are tasked with protecting the public's funds and making logical investments on their behalf. That's something we should take very seriously. I have a, I happen to have a master's degree in public administration. I could put together a nice plan for you. Does that make me qualified as an individual to implement and to sustain the project that is being presented to us today? No, I don't believe it does. I need, before investing a million dollars, to see some results. We've had this conversation before. I need to see some results from these people that keep coming back, asking for more and more money again and again, and I'm not willing to take that risk. I'm sorry, it just doesn't sit right with me. We're up here to protect the interests of the public, and I cannot do it. I'd like to see a little more accountability on your end and some results first. Thank you.
Thank you. One thing I do want to, want to say here, it's very important that we all respect each other, and I think tonight, we've, we've had a pretty good discussion. Sometimes it can be heated, and that's just the way sometimes it goes. I think it's important that we don't fall back to the trap of accusing others each other of lying. We each have an opinion. It might not be what we think or we believe, but that's okay, we each have an opinion. I do have one question for you, real quick, I'm reading something here, I'm wondering, where is this, it says land at the Spreckel site, where would that be?
What page are you referring to?
Third year, third item A, advocate that the remaining land at the Spreckel site has high potential as an industrial business park.
Which page in the staff report?
That is page 260. How could it be a typo?
That is a typographical error. I think that would be the Hollister Industrial Park.
Why would Spreckels pop up? Just...
It's a, it's an error.
Okay. All right, no problem. Just one, I was just questioning if there was a site Spreckels I didn't know about here in Hollister, it just seemed kind of odd, it jumped out at me. Okay, is there any, anything else?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion.
It's not a motion, it's just direction.
What is, what is your report saying, what you read? You said, give direction, I'd like to make a motion to give direction.
Yes, we're requesting direction on any changes to the draft MOU, and then also for direction to return with the resolution for adoption.
I'm going to recommend that you return, leave the, make the changes draft MOU to correct the typographical error, and to bring it back with the direction to approve the funding.
I believe there's a majority that has that view.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item G7.
Yes, this item is a draft memorandum of understanding with the City of Hollister and the Samhain County Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau. Just as a point of background, the city did assist the, when former Councilmember Gomez was on the city council, that he advocated that $50,000 of the transient occupancy task be reinvested into a marketing campaign. It, it took a while, but it became a MOU with the chamber, and that was executed in 2015. Through that process, the chamber initiated, launched its Discover San Benito branding campaign, and they updated their website, which was sorely in need of updating. They returned and were authorized funding in fiscal year 15, 16 of $100,000 for local and regional marketing, and they primarily used the funding to purchase ads and print media, leverage ads with the Central Coast Tourism Council for national and international advertising campaigns. They developed flyers, maps, handouts, went to trade shows. They also routinely get what they call goodies from local businesses, and they put them in bags, and so that when RV groups go to Bellato or Casa de Fruta, they have those to attract people to come back and spend money in our community. The chamber is in a time of transition and does have significantly reduced staffing and hours. In the Samhain County Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy that was prepared to implement the Samhain County General Plan, and also as a way it was said previously tonight, to enable this community to compete for USD grant funding and Economic Development Administration funding, tourism was identified as an area in need of improvement and support. There is a recommendation to develop and implement a more robust tourism and marketing promotion plan, including the Wine Trail, considering hospitality district, possibly increasing the TOT tax rate, joint promotion with local attractions, and metrics to evaluate effectiveness. The community foundation and the Business Council, Hollister Downtown Association, and the chamber, the boards have been meeting to identify ways that they could collaborate, eliminate duplication in services, and see where their, look, compare their mission statements, and find out how they can work together and partner together better. There's been meetings sponsored by the community foundation, and I attended one of those related to tourism, and it was well-attended with representatives from Hollister Hills, the wine industry, hospitality, and that there's a strong support for working together collaboratively, and also there's a consensus that there needs to be a better marketing strategy than the tourism efforts have today, the collective tourism efforts. So this MOU would commit the change to working cooperatively with the San Juan Committee to retain a qualified professional to develop a fine here marketing strategy plan, and then prioritize near-term and longer-term implementation measures. It recognizes the importance of an updated webpage to promote local employment, business opportunities, community events, and tourism. Prioritizes establishing a welcome center in the chamber office with trained volunteers and space for colocation for staff from the state, federal, and national parks in the area, in order to leverage chamber staff resources and enhance visitor experience for tourists. It requires the chamber to allow colocation of office space with the Economic Development Corporation. It places a strong emphasis on partnerships with local economic development organizations and economic institutions for internships, for education, and business support, and requires with partnerships with local and regional economic development tourism organizations for internships and volunteers, and would include assistance of $2,500 per year for the Pinnacle Gateway Partners. This is what the other gateway communities have been contributing, with the exception of one. But also, this MOU also broadens the tasks of the chamber to beyond just tourism, because it's recognized that they serve as a clearinghouse. I think when people go to a community, sometimes they go to the chamber and they expect to say, I, we did, we, it happened, we, my daughter was getting married, and it was in Oregon, we were trying to figure out where to house all the family in lodging, and we went to the chambers to find out where, what was the best places for those things. When I go to the chamber office, they're a clearinghouse for oddball questions. People call them, when they're coming to the community, they're moving, they're looking for a job, they had posted on, through Constant Contact today, that a local business is hiring. So they also play an important role in economic development, in communicating what, what jobs are out there, and working as a support for businesses that are here, and that businesses want to come here. So they're one of the faces that we present to our community.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
All right. Any questions or comments?
I have questions. Who has our current tourism promotion? Who does our current tourism promotion?
The chamber does it to some extent, the San Juan Committee in San Juan Batista does it, and to some extent, the Hollister Downtown Association does it. The chamber represents the whole campus.
Does the city do it at all? Do we have a budget for tourism promotion?
We, we, it's pretty, yeah. We did join the Central Coast Tourism Council for about a year, but then when we gave funding to the chamber, then the chamber joined that, and they were able to leverage marketing with them, and that they're a well-orchestrated organization that works collaboratively to promote tourism on the Central Coast.
Is that a yes or no? In other words, are we doing any tourism promotion at all in the city?
No.
Do we have a, we don't have anything? No tourism?
We have a link on our webpage, but it's...
Do we have, a link to what?
Just things to do.
Okay, do we have a, do we have a tourism webpage all by itself for the city? The city has a tourism webpage?
To some extent, a little bit of one.
Okay, is that actively supported? In other words, is that up to date? Do we print materials and put them in the hotels? The city, does the city?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Do we run magazine ads?
No.
Is that it?
I'm thinking. So, we count, right now, we count on the Chamber of Commerce to do all the tourism promotion?
In part, in partnership, they partner with the San Juan Committee and the Downtown Association.
Yeah, not, not by themselves, but, but by themselves.
But, and we have, there's 200, almost 219,000 people went to Pinnacles last year, 80% of them went to the east side. And then, I don't have the counts, but there's quite a large number of people that go to Hollister Hills.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. Councilmember Sendez?
I have a question. Have we not done all of those things in the past? The things that the vice mayor is talking about, have we not done all of those things in the past?
Has it, has the city placed ads in magazines and things of that nature?
We worked on, we, we partnered with the chamber to fix a website or to promote tourism through a website, did we not?
Yes.
Did we not put things in hotels?
Yes.
Did we not do a magazine?
When we say we, we collectively with the chamber, right?
Exactly.
Yes, yes.
Yet, we're still here today, facing the same issues that we were facing back then, only this time, they're not asking for $50,000, they're asking for close to 500. I just want to say to the business owners, to the EDs out here, it's nothing personal. I helped run a business with my partner, and it's a bad business investment. And I'd also like to point out to the public, I think that might be the distinction between the faction that you're seeing up here. It just doesn't make sense, logical sense. And it's no secret, I hate to put this out there, but you've been through, since I, I've been meddling in politics for a while, I've been sitting out there where you were sitting at, I remember seeing the executive director, Julie Viera, Candace Ledesma, and now we have another one, and it's no secret that you've been having financial problems. It doesn't make sense to me, and we've had this discussion, to invest or reinvest in the same business model when you're not producing results.
I'm not sure how we quantify what a result is based on what we've done in the past. I think, I think it's, it's a little bit frustrating sitting here.
Thank you.
Bill, let me, let me help for a second.
The, the MOU, the MOU is not the same as the one...
Right. Okay. Councilmember Spencer?
I would like to point out something that, Councilmember Resendez, I did it right.
Resendez. Almost.
Almost.
I'm getting close, I'm getting close. It is not $500,000, it's 385,000 over five years, because they're only asking for 77,500 per year for the next five years. This year, 2018, 2019, they got 20,000. If we are going to be up here and we're going to be talking about money, we have to have the right figures for the public, not throw out 500,000 for this, and not getting pissy. But the thing is, we want right, accuracy, thank you, because I can never say that word, we want accurate information going out to the public, right here, writing 77,500 per year for the next five years, which comes out to about 385.
I think I said close to 500, so I rounded up. Thank you for correcting me.
We don't round up. Accurate numbers, please.
Councilmember Lenore, did you have a comment?
I'd like to hear what the city manager was going to say.
I, I was just, I was just trying to say, in any of these, in any of these formats, it takes several years to see the benefits of what your, your actions are. And when we talk about where we're advertising or what we're doing, to assume that you're going to see some sort of quantifiable result of that within a year or two, it doesn't make a lot of sense. I mean, that just doesn't happen. I would say that every reasonable, rational community in the state of California has a Chamber of Commerce. It's kind of the basic necessity of what you are as a community. It is kind of where you go, where businesses go. If, if, if the City of Hollister or San Benito County doesn't have a Chamber of Commerce, it's embarrassing. That's embarrassing. And that's, we don't, and we don't need to be embarrassed.
Okay, so let me ask a question, if I can. The 77,500, is in addition to the 50,000 we give annually?
They are, they receive nothing right now.
Oh, we didn't give, I thought we gave money to...
There was no, the MOU did not go forward.
About a year and a half ago, the council said they stopped their funding.
Okay, so we were giving money to the HDA?
Yes.
Okay. I think, we, we got two different conversations happening, and I don't mean you two.
Three different conversations.
That would be probably more. It's the support of the chamber, and then it's marketing and tourism. Now, personally, I'll say this, I think Bill's correct on this, it's important to have a chamber, and we've, we've supported them in the past, as with the HDA. The number, I think it used to be 50,000 or something. Now, what happened in the past few years... Now, what happened in the past few years was there was more of a marketing effort on the behalf from the Chamber to do some marketing and quite frankly, it wasn't very successful. It was, I think, using some strategies that you probably wouldn't use anymore. Does that mean we don't market? No, of course we do. But I, I think if we're going to use dollars for marketing, my view on this is we should be finding companies that really specialize in this. It's very tough for someone that doesn't have the experience to be doing it. It just doesn't. And we, you know, we talked about this, I was very pro, when this idea first came to us, I was very supportive of putting that money into this and giving it a shot. And let me tell you, they did make an effort. She made a great effort at, at trying to make it happen. But quite frankly, it was, the next year we're like, hey, maybe we can use kind of more modern technology rather than flyers in a hotel, I mean, you know, doesn't really work, or magazines that you got to really go out of your way to go pick up a, a magazine. You know, I, I'm bombarded with hits all the time from Paso Robles, from Reading. Now, they got marketing campaigns. And I think the point I'm trying to make here is if we're going to be trying to do, as I was trying to make with the other segment there, if we're going to be making an effort for marketing or for something specific, we should be working with professionals that do it.
Mayor Velazquez, if I could just point out that...
Yeah.
The first item on the terms and conditions is marketing and it says in cooperation with San Juan Committee, there would be, we would be retaining a qualified professional to develop a five-year marketing strategy plan for tourism.
Yeah.
And then the second is goal setting. Within three months of that planned completion, there would be priorities for the first, third and fifth year for implementation.
Okay, thank you.
So it, it does include a, from a qualified professional.
Yeah. So what, my point of this is, I don't mind the support of the Chamber, the HDA, at a number, it's a $50,000 number. When we go past that for other things, I think it just doesn't work out well. I believe, as the City Manager pointed out, it's important to have somebody at the Chamber. He's absolutely correct because people, they call around, they're looking for information. But it's also very important to have stability at your Chamber and I know you're making an effort to, to bring that back and I know you're, you're working hard at it. So rather than having this number, what I'd like to see again is, all right, we're going to allocate some annual dollars to Chamber, but then we should really look at how do we put together a tourism package, but really working with a company that specializes in it, so you're not taking on that, that burden and we could focus on it correctly. And again, what are we trying to accomplish? I always ask that question, what are we trying to accomplish? How do we get the most bang for the buck? Thank you. Councilmember, Vice Mayor Richmond?
I, I tend to agree with you.
Wait, what?
That may surprise you. I tend to agree with you. I think, I think marketing tourism is, is a, is a formulaic thing, okay? Whether you go to one of these companies that send out marketing emails all the time or, you know, or you make a website, I think it's very formulaic. And so I, I do think, I do think somewhere in the neighborhood of $50,000 is an adequate, adequate funding for something formulaic. Now, if it starts to work and it goes up, it's very, in my opinion, this is the kind of program, we should see some results in two and a half years to three years, that's just my opinion. And therefore, we would, we can get a good handle on it. And I think, I think that will support the formula. What, what's the difference, why do I have a different stance? I do not think that job growth is formulaic. I do not think, if it was, everybody would have the formula and everybody would have all the jobs in their, in their, in their, in their town. It's anything but formulaic. It's all about being, looking at what's available and being flexible and going here and going there. So I do think that's, I will support something like that. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Spencer?
I do want to point out one more time that it does state in the MOU that the Chamber will commit to working cooperatively with San Juan Community Committee to retain a qualified professional and that's what everybody wants. If they're going to retain a professional to help with bringing in tourism and everything else, I don't see why we cannot accept this MOU. You're going to have to pay a professional. Michelle's doing a great job. She's working her butt off to get what we want in this community. We want tourism. We want to bring people, and I will say it again, and I will keep saying it, and I will scream it from the top of the pinnacle mountain where I've been before, we've got to spend money. You can't get stuff for free. And I'm just saying, I support this MOU, I don't see anything wrong with it and I think it's a great, great opportunity for San Benito County and the City of Hollister and the community.
Yeah. Do we have speaker cards on this?
Would it be possible for the Executive Director, Michelle Leonard, to make a presentation?
I thought she was just backing you up there. Michelle, come on up.
I can do it in three minutes, if you need me to do it in three minutes.
Do you want to get this meat grinder we got going?
Hi. Thank you, thank you, Council, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor. I really appreciate the time to speak to you. I would first and foremost like to start by clarifying some wild misconception that the Chamber is having financial issues because we're not. The reason that the Chamber had financial issues, and I will say this very clearly, is because we used our Chamber budget to pay for all of the tourism efforts when we didn't get our funding renewed last spring. So we didn't want to stop doing everything we were doing, maintaining our website, paying somebody monthly to promote social media ads and create that content for us. There were so many moving parts, if we stopped it, we would lose momentum. So we kept spending money out of our Chamber budget, thinking, hey, we'll get it back and we'll be okay. And it didn't come back. And Candace didn't get a chance to come back and run the City Council and Julie left and that was used as excuses why they didn't want to give it to the Chamber because there was going to be nobody there. And I've been here since November and with no tourism budget, I have used so much of my 2019 budget for tourism. I took it out of my own, my own contract and salary with the Board. You can ask them. We negotiated my contract with the money we had left after we paid down the debt. We have zero debt in the Chamber, zero debt. We have money in the bank, we have money in the bank for the dinner dance next year. We are doing fine. We have 392 members. We are doing fine. We are building strong partnerships with the City of Hollister. Hollister Rec has exclusively partnered with us for Taste of Hollister. Together, we're going to do that. The Downtown Association has so many events that the Chamber can support and promote and participate in. I was the first one to say, give me a booth at Farmer's Market, put me in a booth in Street Festival, or sign me up to volunteer or a stop on the downtown wine and beer stroll for San Juan Batista. I'm on the Committee for Planning of the 150 Year Anniversary. The Chamber's a nonprofit participant for the Sip and Celebrate. There's partnerships everywhere. EDC did this amazing PowerPoint that we can just say, hey, that's good, we like that, that works perfectly. And we're not doing separate things. Everybody wants us to avoid redundancies and everybody working separately in their own silo, we're working together. For the first time in a really long time, all of us are working together and we're doing it really well and our community is thriving. Events are attended and people are excited and people ask me, what's new with the Chamber? What's new with you? What are you guys doing next? What's next, I need to know. Events are selling out for everybody. HDA had to bump their event up to 750 tickets for the wine and beer stroll because at 600 they sold out. Everybody's doing better and that happens because of cross collaborating and partnerships and a willingness to amplify our community. I think so many of you will appreciate my willingness to be a servant to our community, to step back and give everybody the floor at the same time, to be inclusive, to be thoughtful. So many of you have seen me as a kid, I went to school here and now I raise my three kids here. I'm so much a part of this community. If somebody can champion marketing, tourism promotion, job growth, staying off of Highway 25, it's the Chamber and our partners. I've never needed a lot of money. This doesn't pay me. It doesn't. But it's to hire people in this community that also raise their families here to do a good job. I've partnered with the best in our community so that we can have qualified consultants with experience to help us tell our story as a community. Don't tell my story, tell our story. Everybody that's lived it with the perspectives of the ag community, the nonprofit community, the art community, every single community at the table, tell our story. And I want to do that. I want to put it on the internet, I want to put it on billboards, I want to put it in the pathways to the Pinnacles, on the Gateway, everywhere you can put it, because this is a great place to live, work, shop and play. And everybody can tell you that. So if there is not this super strong desire to say, if anybody can do it, our communities that are partnering together, I'll spearhead it, spearheaded by the Chamber, if you guys don't think we can do it, then there's not enough belief in all of us because together we're doing it, it's not just me. So don't give the money to me, don't give the money to the Chamber, give the money to your people, to your community, because it's not just for me, it's for us.
Michelle?
Yes.
Oh, yay. See, she's very good. She's just... And see, this is why we believe in you. The, the question, as I mentioned earlier, and I, I was surprised, I thought we did have money still going to the Chamber. I knew we were cutting back on the tourism part because I don't think we were very happy on that. So I definitely support that and I think that's important. So we have it. I think what would be great, as I mentioned prior, is, you know, putting together a plan. I mean, your, your greatest asset is you're hearing what's really going on. You know what's happening at the hotels or you could help us understand how many visitors they're all having. So we're clear on that. Why are they here? Get the information so then we could put a focus plan. But I think, I'm going to repeat this again, this is when we hire a professional company that does this and knows how to really do it so it's very effective, rather than trying to reinvent the wheel. That way, you can focus on the community outreach and making sure it's happening or when tourists are calling, asking for the question about when the bike rally is going to be here, you can tell them, next year.
I get a lot of those calls.
I know you do.
Tell them I'm excited.
I know, I know you do.
Tell them we support it.
But it's kind of a joke, but at the same time, that, that's how I see and I, I think the City Manager is absolutely correct. We don't have a Chamber, we're, we're going to have problems. But I would really, I think it's important, like I said, Paso Robles is on my phone every day, Reading is on there quite a bit and a few others. You know what's really disappointing is seeing friends I had, I grew up from Southern California, posting a picture in Paso Robles saying, thank you so much, Paso Robles. Hey, an hour and a half, you could have been in Hollister.
And so to kind of piggyback on that, we have this really detailed plan to instantly digitize all of our marketing so that you can really target ads. Like if somebody's driving on Highway 101 going past us, San Juan Batista's going to be able to pull them in because we have these strategic marketing campaigns that we're going to implement. If you're on the bypass and you want people downtown, there's going to be ads that say, turn right, go back down and come back to downtown, come eat, come have dessert, come do all of these things here. Facebook has this ability to do all of these ads and I'm not an expert in it, but that's why we hire experts so that they can teach us how to do that and how to implement it and give people the opportunity. But those are targeted ads and that's where we need to be spending our money.
So I can go back to, we can probably get back to the start of this, making sure there is some funding for the Chamber.
Yes.
So we can have these better conversations as we had tonight, which is great. So we get to the point of what's the next step and move on forward. So I'm willing, as far as the fund, I'm willing to go back to support of 50,000 a year because I think that's, that's a starting point to give you what you need, to get the basics going. And then what's the plans we're going to invest in a detailed advertising plan?
Mr. Mayor?
Vice Mayor Richmond?
Would you be willing to support $50,000 a year plus the Pinnacles Gateway?
Oh, yeah.
Amount?
Yeah, absolutely, sir.
So it won't come out at $50,000?
Yeah, no, no, absolutely. Councilmember Resendez?
We, you know that we've talked, I think for like three hours straight about the same thing over and over. I really appreciate your passion and coming up here and speaking on behalf of the community. It was very inspirational. As a business owner, we have to see a return on our investment. I don't know how you're going to show that frankly, but I would like to see that. I agree with the Vice Mayor that if we could see that and have measured results and it's working, then why not reinvest in it, right? If it's working, it's working. And I really appreciate that you're moving in a more digitalized fashion rather than outdated booklets and magazines that probably are not going to bring you. So more geo, what is it called? Geocaching or, you know, targeted ads, that type of thing, all digital is great. I would also support $50,000 with the Pinnacles partnership when we get to it.
Phil, can I ask a question?
Sure.
The latest update on the TOT, part of this whole plan was taking a percentage of the TOT and reinvesting it. So what is the latest update? And that's why I'm glad we can get, somebody's going to bring us more information on, on a monthly basis, I expect to see here in presenting updates on hotels and what's going on here. I know you will.
Hey Brett?
Is Brett still here? Wake up Brett. Ah, there he is. What, what are we at as far as the annual TOT now?
This should be on top of your head. Do you want to take five minutes and go find out?
Our TOT is about 400,000 a year with a rate of 8%. So which is fairly low for most communities now.
So how much do we owe them? No, we didn't get it.
About 400, is that net or is that gross?
That's a gross amount.
So keep in mind, so that's a, that's a gross amount, so 50% of what's derived from the Fairfield, it goes back to them.
Right. And the other hotels that did the improvements?
Which I don't think...
Nobody else did their improvement?
That's the only one.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So I, I'd like to, I, I think Vice Mayor is correct, the Pinnacles, we want to make sure we're still, we don't want to lose...
I do have speakers on this.
We do have speakers?
Yes.
Okay. I thought we didn't have any. All right. Who do we have?
We have Jared McDonald.
I'm deeply saddened that I have to follow that up.
Yeah.
This is not going to be nearly as motivational.
It's hard.
But it will be nice. I just want to thank you guys all. You guys run and you dedicate your time to taking care of the community and I appreciate that so much from you guys. I'm just going to address a couple of things. Roland, I love the way that you're talking about this particular topic. I love that you're concerned about the way we're spending the people's money, a lot of that. And you're very constructive, so that at least gives us something to think about when we're leaving. I like that you mentioned what qualifies a particular group to be able to do these particular tasks. And I think that if you look at our current board and staff, you're going to see a lot of people who are very successful in our community directing these particular people. You can have the marketing degree and all that stuff, but I think you still need to have an intimate knowledge of your community to be able to be very successful with that. And you have very successful people who have been in our community for generations doing that, going to be the ones directing this person. I think that's fantastic as well. From a business standpoint, I think if I had somebody, a group of nonprofit people who are all successful in their community, who want to come and help me with my marketing and they're like, oh, I've already been doing it for the last year and trying to do stuff in the meantime while I haven't been getting paid for it, I think that's a super just, there's great people who want to do this already. So, I don't know, I already, just hearing her, I just didn't think we asked for enough money. Or maybe something where you get money from last year that we didn't get funding for so that way it can help offset some of the difficulties we had last year, but we don't deserve her, she's fantastic. And I think going to the digital era of... And I think going to the digital era of what we're doing, you know, anytime I look at this stuff, I think somebody else is already doing it correctly. How can we, you know, look and see how other people are being successful and take that and then adapt that to the needs of our community? And I think you have people like Sue who have done business planning consulting and Selena, who was here earlier. You heard from her. There's a lot of great people in this. We're working with all the other agencies to collaborate with this stuff. It's a huge source of knowledge to be able to have directing these people handling tourism. That's fantastic. I'm surprised they only asked for 70. Yeah, so that was really it. But I do appreciate you guys, and the more constructive feedback you get, I think that's one of the biggest things for me, and that's the reason I've been successful in what I do, is being able to take that constructive criticism and then adapt that and meet your guys' needs. So I hope you'll be able to continue to do that, so we can take that and give you that control in place so you can see that we're being successful with the money that you try and let us utilize and that we can continue that. Because it's easier now more than ever to try and get that data, and I think it's important that we try and produce that for you. I've seen a lot of people on Facebook comments upon that, and I think that's a completely reasonable thing to request. And I hope we can get that to you, and you can be happy with what we do with it.
Thank you.
Salvador Mora?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Sorry, I don't remember the Chamber of Commerce CEO's name, but I did meet her once, Michelle. She should have been a football coach because that was a pretty inspirational speech out there, you know. I used to coach football and wrestling, so I used to like to give pep talks, and that got me going. That got me going. And what special leader we have in her to give what is hers so that we can benefit overall. Not everyone will do that, you know, but for her, she loves this community so much that she was willing to do that. And I think it's a shame that we're even doubting giving money that's needed to help promote tourism and get all that stuff going on, you know. If we keep making excuses on why we shouldn't give money to our community, you know, the mayor said, "Oh, well, you know, we need to hire a professional." Well, you should have read the language in the MOU. It said that they're going to hire one. You know, that was something, you know, we had a gentleman that made a nice presentation. He has experience. But you wouldn't support that, even though he probably has experience. So it's like, it keeps changing the reasons why you try not to support the community, you know. So it's very disappointing. Hopefully, we do get the support to give them the full funding that they're asking. And I agree with the gentleman that just spoke. Should have asked for a little bit more. It's need, especially when they haven't been funding and she's having to use their budget for things that we should be supporting. You know, we really need to take a hard look at ourselves and take out any personal reasons and do what's right for this community, you know. I know that they're associated or they collaborate with HDA, and I know some of our elected officials have issues with the HDA. Take that aside, and let's do what's right for our Chamber of Commerce that can help our businesses and our city overall. And let's get those people into town. You know, because driving to Monterey, there's the aquarium, but what's there in Hollister? I don't know. There's not, you know, there are things, but you really have to dig deep. So we need that advertisement to get that knowledge and information out there. So hopefully, we get support on this resolution.
Is that it? So can I, I want to make sure we're all clear here, and I think there's confusion in different places. First, it's important to fund the Chamber as a standard. That's what we're, when we're talking about those dollars, it's not the advertising dollars. I'm talking more making sure we have some in place along with the money that needs to go to the Pinnacles. Second, put together a plan, meaning what is Paso Robles doing? How's Reading doing it? Who's doing what? How effective is it? How much does it cost? So we can invest those dollars that way. Meaning professionals, not meaning they're not professional, meaning in the past, we made the mistake. And let's not make, repeat the same mistake of using things that are just, quite frankly, they were 1980s and not even 90s. I mean, it was just, it just didn't work, and we talked about it. So, you know, if that budget, there's a reason we allocated dollars from the TOT to put it towards tourism marketing. That doesn't mean it's the 20 whatever thousand left over from that, that if it's a good marketing plan that we all believe in, and you're going to come right up and do that that routine for us again, you're probably going to get us for half a million. But it's the plan of what we believe and we can all agree on. It's going to be an effective plan, and we can all stand behind it. If that's $30,000, that's $50,000, if we believe in it, we believe in you. That's what I'm talking about. First off, is getting the basics squared away here so that you have the support you need to do your daily operations. Otherwise, you can't do any of it, right? That's what the numbers I'm talking about. What I'd like to see you do is come back and say, "Okay, here's this plan. Here's how it works. Here's how we track people coming in. Here's how we're promoting the people. Here's how much it's going to cost." That's another conversation, hopefully, within a month, we could be having. Because it's a very vital part. But today, what I was mentioning here was, let's get you started again, making sure it's covered and we're doing it right. So that's why I was recommending the $50,000 as that base. And as Vice Mayor Richmond pointed out, the $2,500, I did not count into it separately, make sure we're we're not losing that support and making sure they understand we're still with them as a team. So that's what I was trying to point out. So, Reston Council, how's... Uh, Councilmember Lenore? Okay.
I like the MOU the way it is. I respect Michelle. You gave so unsavagely for the Chamber of Congress on behalf of the community. We had a lack of funding last year. A year and a half, they went without any money. They didn't complain. They just got the job done. They're asking for our help to benefit the community. You need funding to get the basics started. I don't want to give not enough funding and then it flops. That's the worst thing we could possibly do. You have to give it adequate funding for it to be successful. I don't think $50,000 is enough for all the things I read. Marketing, goal setting, web page, social media, sustainable funding, tourism committee membership, co-location. Don't forget, they're going to locate that professional in their office, employment, business development, partnerships, internship volunteers, activities. They have a good thing for reporting their expenditures. The Chamber agrees that the Chamber is solely responsible for reporting all revenues received and expenditures and payments of all federal state taxes. The city is not going to be responsible for any federal or state taxes or social security or Medicaid benefits. Folks, number one gripe, we need tourism. All the time downtown, tourism, tourism. Well, we're trying to get it done. We need adequate funding. I'm sorry, but I'm for the MOU the way it reads.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, I wonder if I can ask a question. Would the council be, would the majority of the council be in in support of having the Chamber come back once they've identified the... I just don't know what a professional costs. That's my concern. I have no concept of what, we say we're going to go get a professional. You, the mayor has indicated he would like to see a professional. I don't have any problem with getting a professional in the thing, but I just don't even have a a concept of what it costs. Could we, whatever we do here, can we also ask them to come back when they've identified approximate cost of a professional help? And take a look at whether or not that deserves extra funding, additional funding on top of the basic plan? Because I just, I don't know. I have to admit, I don't know, and therefore, I don't know if that's enough funding.
Councilmember Resendez?
I would imagine if you put together a proposal, you know how much the professional costs. And if we're going to ask them to lower the amount that they're requesting, that they would have to go through these on their own and just start eliminating some of these... The MOU, the draft MOU. But I would imagine that they've already got a budget put together that identifies how much that would cost, so.
We can... We could bring that information back.
Just that I know the $50,000 doesn't go that far. I know you think it's a lot of money, but now when you're running tourism for a whole city, in county. But, you know, I do kind of want to know, how did you get to the $77,000 figure?
I guess I want to repeat it again because I think we're hearing different things. The $50,000 is to make sure you have the basics to take care of running the Chamber. The advertising budget, I love for you to come back and say, "Hey, turns out, we're going to do this plan with this professional. Here's how we're going to market it, and it's going to cost us $30,000. It's going to cost us $40,000." What's the plan so we can get a return, so we can believe in it? I don't want to get everything mixed up. I'm not saying you're limited to that number. What I'm saying is first, let's take care of the basics. I thought you were still covered as we pay the HDA each year to keep them going. I thought the Chamber was still covered. I did not, I missed this part when things went awry in the past. So what I'm basically saying again is the base to cover you as a Chamber to make sure you can provide somebody there to answer the questions when people call, that's a foundational issue. The promotional package, I'm hoping, again, as Vice Mayor pointed out, and Councilmember Resendez and Councilmember Lenore, come back. What's the package we're going to present to the public to start bringing people in? That's a different conversation, a different number. I don't know what that number is. It could be 20 something thousand. It could be 30. It could be 40. Again, we allocated, we committed ourselves to make sure we're going to use TOT dollars to promote our community. That was our plan. We're not going to take those back and say, "We changed our plan. We don't want to promote our community." We do. And I was just waiting for you to come back and say, "Here's a great way to do this." Councilmember?
So I'm looking at this, and subsequently, the city committed to $50,000. They're asking for $77,500. And if I read this right, committed $50,000 for tourism marketing in the fiscal year '15, '16, and $100,000 in '17, '18 for local and regional marketing. Now, you just said that you didn't want to take money away from them, but yet they have not been funded in a year and a half, almost two years? So you actually did take money away? I understand. I mean, I would like to know what this, you know, everything, but I don't see anything wrong with giving them $77,500. That doesn't buy a lot anymore. Come on, guys. This economy right now is great, but everything's going up. She's going to have a professional. She's already talked to one. It's in the MOU. So I don't understand this $50,000. You give them $50,000. That's like you giving me $10 for, what do you call that? When you pay, what is it?
Don't know.
It's when you pay a kid, your kid for...
Child labor? Allowance?
Allowance. That's like you giving me $10 for a loss. Okay, that ain't going to work. I'm going to want a lot more because I have to do a lot more. I'm just saying that...
Sorry. I'm sorry.
I'm just saying that way back when, we gave the Chamber $50,000. It is now the 21st century. It is going on 2020. I do not see why we do not give them $77,500, which they're asking for. Give it to them. Michelle will bring us everything our little hearts desire.
Phil, were you going to make a comment?
No, I think, obviously, you folks are the policymakers here. I think what I was hearing is that you have a base amount to keep their operations going. If Michelle and Robert and the board comes back to the council in a couple of months and says, "Hey, we have a $150,000 ad campaign that we want to start with," I think that's what they're coming to you and going to be asking for because then it's project or program specific that may be much greater than $27,000 in extra dollars per year over five years. It could be a much different thing. And having that money upfront may help them more in a large sum so they can do more marketing in the future. So I, and I wasn't trying to put words in the mayor's mouth, but I think that's, I was, it's, that's where I thought he was trying to get to, something like that?
Absolutely right, and that's what we did in the past. So in the past, we were supporting the Chamber at $50,000 a year without doing any campaigns. Then they presented a campaign that they wanted to go after that we supported, and we gave them an additional amount of money to do that campaign. That's what I'm saying here. Let's get you started again with the basic to get you a foundation so you can run your Chamber. Put together a great plan, shows how it's going to affect our community and how it's going to bring tourism, and we support you. I don't know what that number is yet. And I would hate for you to say, "Well, you know what? We only got $22,000, but we got a plan. If we had $50,000, it'd be great." Well, then bring the $50,000 plan forward. What is it? So we can believe in it and hopefully make or help give input to help you succeed with it, because when you succeed, we're going to all benefit from it. And again, this is why we put the TOT dollars, we allocated this exactly for this reason. So it's not taking money. It's giving them a foundational amount so they can operate and then come back with a plan of say, what you're going to do and how much it's going to cost, that we believe in. And if that's, turns out to be $22,000, well, there it is. But if it turns out to be $50,000 and we believe in it, so be it. If it comes back as in the past, $100,000, and we're really supporting you, and you're proving it, well, then, there you go. Does that make sense?
Real quick question. It's getting late. I'm tired. But I'm curious if the county has, is going to support you guys, and if so, how much? Have they committed to giving you support? And if so, how much?
There's been no commitment. We have not approached them with an ask at all.
All right.
What's that?
I think, if I may, I think that's a fair, I think that's a fair way to approach it. The only thing I would suggest is when you bring the campaign back, I would prefer personally, and you'll have to list to the majority of council, but my view would be, don't bring back a little piece of the campaign. Bring back the campaign, if you know what I'm talking about, okay? That's my recommendation. My recommendation is not to do it piecemeal, but to bring back an integrated campaign. It may not be the ultimate campaign. It might not be a five-year campaign, but a piece of the campaign that makes an impact. Coordinated, thorough, across the board, enough to make an impact. So, and come back and give us the number. And I think we'll give you a fair valuation and whether or not we can afford it.
Okay. So is that the direction, sir? Is there any other comments or questions, Seth? So I would like to put forward again, is it the direction tonight, if it's the majority here, the $50,000 to get you, again, going on an annual basis, to make sure you're covered, and then come back with your project. What is that? And ask also the county how they're going to be involved in this project because otherwise, it becomes a Hollister project. I'm not going to go through the past where it was a San Antonio County project and we were paying the whole bill. So let's really get them moving on this one. Okay? Sound good? Is that...
Yeah. Is there any idea how long you might need to do that campaign part? Just a ballpark figure?
It's prepared. I just don't have the budget and what I need.
The budget's...
So we already have a plan, not itemized in one, two, three, four, year, five. But in EDC's plan to create a regional marketing plan, it's all the key players that are creating that plan together. So instead of them using a majority of the budget that the county and the city would give them, we're all pulling all resources to create that marketing plan together. So that's a big part of what this is.
Okay, now you're confusing me. Just kidding. So. The direction tonight, the fifty thousand?
I'm, I'm happy with that.
The twenty-five hundred, make sure we're covering the pentacles. Okay? Thank you. Okay. Now, let's move to G eight.
Christine, did you want me to do it or you want to do it? I can do this.
So tonight, um, I'm just requesting from council to please give direction on option one or option two, or you could always come up with a third option on your own. Option one would be to prepare an RFP to hire an outside firm, hire interim city manager who would assess the entire city of Hollister with fresh eyes, provide recommendations to council and assist the council in the conduction of the recruitment process for the city manager recruitment. Option two would be to prepare a request or proposal to hire an outside firm to conduct the recruitment process for council approval for the city manager recruitment. And then of course you could come up with something on your own. If you would, uh, choose which you'd like that I can come back on the April twenty-second um, special meeting with a, I know you guys wanted to kind of move on that quick, the special meeting on April twenty-second with a resolution so that we can get the ball rolling quickly. So it'd be a week.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
I'm willing to make myself a target. Um, I, I, I am absolutely convinced that we need to recruit for a permanent city manager. We have, we have adequate time. I read an article in the Wall Street Journal two days ago, three days ago. It said that Wells Fargo, with all their problems, needs a new CEO and it's going to be really tough to find one, probably take all three months, it said. Well, we've got a lot more than three months and I think that's adequate time to find the right person. If we can't find the right person, well, you know, uh, then we can, the option is always to hire, hire an interim city manager. I don't think we ought to make an interim city manager a goal. I believe we need a permanent city manager and I, I have faith that the city council in all its wisdom can find somebody, um, who will do it. If it turns out that, if it turns out we're not offering enough money or, or a nice enough office or nobody out there is really interested in, in, in this job after they checked the health report of Billy, as he, he came in healthy and what he is now, then perhaps we made a mistake. But, um, like I said, I'm willing to be the target. That's what I think we ought to do and that's what I'm going to support. Thank you.
So would that be option two then? Thank you.
If that's what it says.
Option two.
Yeah. That's permit, that's permanent.
Option two would be to prepare a request for proposal to hire an outside firm to conduct the recruitment process for the council. Are you guys okay with that? For, yes, for the city manager recruitment.
Option two is to recruit for the permits.
Yeah.
Either way, we're going to have to do an RFP for an outside.
Okay, so, Councilmember Spencer?
Okay, I'm, I'm for option two. I have worked under interim, um, not a city manager, but superintendent and it, no, it does not. It, it's bad. It's not good. So my vote is for option two.
Okay. Sure, did you, you were saying you?
Are we doing a public comment?
Yeah, could we make any comments or questions we have?
I actually do have one public.
Okay. Councilmember Resendez?
I'll make it quick. Option one, I think, uh, it's, it's always a good idea and I think we talked about this last time, just to bring somebody from outside with a different perspective, um, and as many resources as we can get onboard. This is a very important decision that is going to affect or can possibly affect our city for years to come and I would go for option one without a doubt.
Okay. You have a speaker card?
I do. Salvador Mora?
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor and council. Uh, I believe option one is, is not an option whatsoever. You only hire an interim when the position is vacant. Our city manager is onboard, not retiring until sometime in November. We have plenty of time. That is a waste of money that we are even proposing. And I'm, I was, I was surprised, was it about two, three meetings ago when the mayor even suggested that, that we do that? It's one thing if, if, uh, current city manager was to say, next month, I'm gone. Okay, we can't get it done. It takes us three months to hire. It's understandable. That's typically, at least where I come from, where I worked at, you know, in, in the county, they only have interim positions if the position is vacant. Now, we had really straight guidelines. They couldn't recruit for that position until it became vacant, so we had a lot of interim. Here, the situation is different. You guys are allowed to recruit even though the position is filled. You can get someone hired within a month or two. The current city manager can train and with those sets of fresh eyes who are going to be permanent, they can do an assessment themselves. Why put in interim manager who may or may not get the job, not even apply? Have them do a thorough analysis just to leave or potentially hire a new person. And then that person, I'm sure that they would want to do their own personal analysis to figure out what the best direction is for the department, all the departments. So we're going backwards. That makes no sense. You're wasting money. It's like if Chief Westrick were to say, I'm, I'm going to resign in December, you're going to have an interim, so you're going to pay him his salary and then have an interim in turn. And then you're going to hire someone else. So economically, it doesn't make sense. You know, you're a big one, Mr. Mayor, about not spending money. You know, you don't want to waste the public's money as well as some of the city council members have mentioned. You don't want to waste the community's tax dollars. That's exactly what you're doing if you're supporting option one. You do not do that. That's backwards. You know, uh, don't want to be critical. Some people say they run businesses. Well, if you run your business like that, you, you're not going to last very long or you won't be very profitable. So I, I strongly encourage the board, I mean, not the board, sorry, city council and the mayor to support option two. Thank you.
No more speakers, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. So there's, there's obviously plenty of opinions and it's actually quite common to do this and you might not understand the reasoning behind it, but a lot of times an interim comes in, really looks at it very independently, understands what the problems are, focuses on the problems, cleans them up so the new person come in and it's already on track. Some people can see it differently. That's okay. I'm more a believer in making sure you bring a fresh set of eyes that is just there to make sure everything is good or what can be improved without feeling or worried about their position in the future. It's never a bad idea, um, especially in this case. I mean, we have, we do have a lot more time. If there wasn't as much time, I would probably be leaning the other way, but I think it's, it's another option. But I believe there's a majority that wants option two.
Carol?
Carol?
Yeah, could I speak now?
Yes, you can. Just wave at me when you're ready.
For the sake of time, I agree with you one hundred percent. Everything you said rings true. Uh, I want the fresh set of eyes to be the new city manager, not the interim, not the option two.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
There's a majority here for option two. That'd be, that was on number eight, correct? Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
So for item nine, recruitment of the AdHoc Committee. So I will appoint Vice Mayor Richmond and myself to that committee. A lot of resonates when we read through. If that's all right with the, uh, the council?
Yes, I very much appreciate Marty Richmond's call.
And so do I.
Okay, so is there any speakers on that?
No, Mr. Mayor?
Okay. All right. Number ten.
Number ten, um, Councilmember Resendez needs to, um, ratify an appointment with of course council approval. There's, um, the re-applicants and it's your choice, so.
Real quick backstory, I had a hard time filling this position. Um, and then all of a sudden we had three applicants who are, I, I think that's usually how it happens, but I just want to commend and thank anybody who puts themselves in a position like this, especially these three people. I think that I'm going to appoint Renee Wells as the airport, airport advisor commission. And to the others that applied, um, again, thank you and please stay involved and stay in touch.
Thank you.
Is there a consensus with, from the council?
Yes, I think that's.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. We're going to move on to item, oh, there is no more business. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries?